This conference will now be recorded.
So we'll call to order this 5:00 PM meeting of the Select Board, and it starts as a joint meeting with the Finance Committee June 29, 2022 at 5:02 PM. And Justin Maycock, President at Town Hall.
Susan Cooper, President at Town Hall.
Frank Abbott, President of Town Hall.
And Michelle Moore, President of Town Hall.
So the first thing we have is the annual operating budget.
Yeah, so I don't have to watch it on here because I'm living.
Right.
And somebody else is recording it and watching it.
Yes.
So, Michelle, we said that we would discuss this generally. And I think, although I know Frank and Susan are very familiar with how the budget process works, they haven't been through it yet as a member of the Finance Committee or Select Board. And clearly, we're not a Select Board member and we're missing a Finance Committee member today. But.
Did you get the most recent version of our edits?
I just put it in their pile, so.
Okay, so this is the, we made changes that we thought were useful. And they should be reflected.
Okay, so I see you added to reflect how we did it last year with adding that one Select. I would change, we don't have a Select minimum, or we have, we're a Select Board member. We have a, so like, one Select Board member. But that's just a minor point.
Wait, Select Board member? Why do you say one Select Board member?
Because that's the way that we have, here, Susan, maybe we haven't seen.
Well, I'm holding this up, but I'm not sure what the.
That's, that's how we did it last year and year before. And that is, that procedure is reflected in the edits that we made.
Oh, so this was the situation so that a Select Board member could attend the Finance Committee on behalf of the Select Board to sort of have a presence there without it?
The town administrator organizes, the department heads to meet with one member.
Oh, now I get it. Now I get what you're referring to. I just wasn't sure which part of the process we're talking about.
The arm.
Yeah, so, and I think the major difference, which you've already put in some edits to reflect this, but between how we've been doing it, or how we did it last year and how it was listed here was, you really had the executive, the Select Board working in conjunction with the town administrator to present a budget to the Finance Committee. Whereas I think what's reflected in your edits and where I think we should be is that the Finance Committee and the Select Board work together throughout the process.
The underlying things on here are things we're adding, not things we're deleting, correct?
No, here.
Oh, I see, that one is delete. Okay, the line under is add and the line under is.
I forgot to.
So I've kind of, you can use.
No, it's fine. It's, no, it's fine now that I know this is on. Like, it looks a little bit different when they're in color and it's just, it's harder for my brain to sense, but I'm sorry to be doing that. Okay, no, I like it better.
Yeah, I think we just, we made changes that we felt reflected the process that has worked. And so if there's further changes, that's possible too. No, I like it. It's pretty nifty.
One, one question that I had when reviewing this was, I don't believe that we have any enterprise funds, but do we have, do we submit revolving fund budgets? Or is that just the amount that goes on the town meeting warrant that says the revolving fund?
The community center is a revolving fund.
And we have like Conservation Commission, we have a few.
Yeah.
Now, we put a number on the warrant that we vote on, right? There's a little chart.
Yeah.
Is that what they, is that what this means when it says?
Yes.
When, okay.
Where are you on here?
It mentioned it a couple times in policy. Annual budgets, last sentence, annual budgets shall be prepared for the general fund, any enterprise, Chapter 44, and revolving funds that exist. And so I guess the point being, when we do the revolving fund budgets, we really just do the same amount every year.
That's what we have been doing, but we can increase it.
Well, I guess it wasn't something rightly or wrongly, it wasn't, it's not been something that's come up. It's just been, we do what we did last year and we just put on the warrant. And so maybe it is, is something worth, and it's in here, but worth clarifying. I think it mentions it one more time.
Clarifying how? I mean, if they exist and they should be prioritically looked at, why would you take it out?
I would add it in to the policy because we haven't really.
It does say revolving funds in that first budget development policy paragraph.
Yeah, and I guess the point being, we didn't, last year, Select Board and Finance Committee, to my recollection, didn't really look at those numbers. We just said, this is what we did last year. Yeah, and I think we have maybe five, we added a few last year, I think, in the special town meeting for the Conservation Commission. I could be mistaken, but accounts that. It just should be part of the review, whether it's the topic of a meeting or a depart, when we discuss those departments.
Because it may be that they need to be level funded or it may not. Also, this is a stupid little thing, but I feel like either Finance Committee and Select Board should be capitalized every time, or it should never be capitalized, but how, now, is annoying.
I go for cap.
Should be.
Yeah, I think it should be capped too. I just.
Under procedures, it says social differences, middle of the.
Procedures, in which part? Because you used the word.
On the front page.
Okay, thank you.
We just need to add Select Board and capitalize Finance Committee, which we missed.
Well, I think, I think we should get some clarity here because are we, if we're having a Finance Committee and a Select Board member meet with the town administrator, with department heads, really, the, the process all, there's really a number of ways that we could go with this with varying levels of involvement of the Finance Committee, the Select Board, and the town administrator. I think we could have the town administrator and the Select Board present a budget to the Finance Committee. I think how it was written, as, how it was drafted was, the town administrator presents a budget to the Select Board who reviews it and then presents it to the Finance Committee.
Which is what, not.
I don't think we want to do that. But I think we should.
I think we covered all of that.
Yeah, we made those changes.
Which we changed everything that doesn't.
It seemed to me like it was already changed.
And the only one we missed was under procedures.
The first one.
Under the first procedures on the front page, it definitely leaves the Select Board out. It only says Finance, in compliance with any bylaw or requirements.
Well, the other part where we kind of leave it out, in my view, is in Budget Workshop, the town administrator shall conduct preliminary budget meetings with departments. Is that with a Finance Committee and a Select Board member?
Do you have the copy that has the changes?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I think that actually Melissa works with the department heads before the time when they actually come in. And I think that refers to helping people fill out their budget worksheets. And that doesn't require the presence of a Select Board member. I think after that initial work is done, that's a good time for us to step up and, you know, second guessing.
So, as I understand what you're saying, that would mean the Budget Workshop is the town administrator working with department heads. Whereas the preliminary budget meeting would be what you were talking about, which is department heads, town administrator, Finance Committee, Select Board member. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, does that make sense?
It does and it doesn't. I think Melissa certainly.
I see what you mean.
Helped people who had questions on the Budget Worksheet.
I think we should take out, conduct preliminary budget meetings with departments and leave it as the town administrator shall provide guidance and instruction.
And that, and that brings me to my next point as well, which is.
Are we going to take the changes?
Well.
You're under that Budget Workshop, like.
Yeah, yeah, the first one on the first page, right.
If, if we get to a point where we really need to vote on changes, once we get to that point, then we will be, but I feel like now we're kind of working, still working through, through it in a rough state.
Can we just stay there for a minute?
Yeah, sure.
All right, we're at Budget Workshop. We're saying the town administrator shall conduct preliminary budget meeting with departments to provide guidance and instruction, and we can cross out to the departments in the preparation and development of their operating budgets.
I think what Melissa was suggesting was removing conduct preliminary budget meetings and just have, provide guidance?
Yeah. Well, if everybody's in favor, I just don't see that, I mean, it is what you're doing, is conducting a preliminary thing.
Yeah, but they're not in person. I understand what Justin was saying. The next part, which we, when we do meet in person, is with the one Finance Committee member and the Select Board member.
So you mean Jim Hunt never comes in here for a hard to hard before?
Many times.
All right, well, if that's, I'm going to stand aside on that because.
I don't have a strong feeling either way.
All right, so you, so the town administrator will provide, shall provide guidance and instruction in the preparation and development of departmental budgets.
And I think one thing that might be added before Budget Workshop is a priority setting or goal setting by the Select Board and Finance Committee. That way, it's clear what the goals are. You can't, it's going to be difficult in some ways to offer guidance to departments if they don't necessarily know, and now the goals, some of the goals stay the same. Spend, you know, money in ways that.
Less, spend less.
Well, spend, spend money.
Spend prudely.
In, in good ways. But maybe one year we know that, you know, we got a lot of loans coming up and we're looking to, or maybe we know that we have a lot of free cash that's been certified, or we know X, Y, or Z. And I think we could add before Budget Workshop a step where the Select Board and Finance Committee come together and set goals and guidance so that it's clear ahead of time and we're not in February and March saying, well, I thought the budget was only going to go up 5%, you thought it was going to go up 2%, and he thought it was going to be cut.
Well, okay, I have, I mean, we had the famous last words previously of like, cut everything 5%, bring it down 5%. Well, we know, when you look at it, you know, you're taking 5% from everything.
It's fixed cost.
Well, you're taking 5% from the assessor, but you can't take 5% from the school budget and you can't take 5% from the retiree fund, but I mean, so in, in fact.
Realistically, it doesn't work that way.
Well, it doesn't work that way. So how, I think, in, I think what you're trying to do is a sense of consensus from the Select Board and Finance Committee that I think we should attempt to offer. But of course, that would be unsensitive because when we get to that point, we will have, we'll get it back and we will have some confidence about what kind of. To them, you know, like, I'm sorry, but you just, thing you are planning on maybe isn't possible because we have this other thing that we've got to do, like, you know, the culver versus the truck or.
So I'm, I know, like, you probably have even more experience around this kind of thing than I do, and obviously universities operate very differently. That said.
Universities.
Universities operate differently, but the way it often works, or has at least for me in the past and for David in the past, was that a department was asked to put forward a budget, but that budget would often include, these are things we absolutely have to have this year, right? Have to have this applied to run the labs that kids have signed up for. Then it's not really optional. We do know that this equipment needs to be replaced slash repaired within the next two years. We prefer to do that this year. And then, like, so, the absolute must, the, this would really be a good idea, be strongly favored, but we could put it off, and then, like, we know that we're going to need these things. They're big things. We need that negative 40-degree freezer. It has to be maintained. And like, if we don't, we're going to have to buy a new one and that's going to be worse. So, like, we can do it next year, but.
Yeah, I think we all, I think we're all in agreement, actually, that, yes, it's good, I think, to, for the Select Board and the Finance Committee to agree on a, a structure and priorities.
I'm just saying that it might be, what I was suggesting was that it might be good for departments also to think about how, how they look at their budget, not just how do I manage this year, but I know that these other things are on the horizon and I need to weight them and I need to explain to the people making the budget decisions why these things are important or what, you know, why I think, because sometimes what happens is the administrators who are making the budget decisions at a university, none of them are scientists guaranteed. And they will make cuts in the budget and they'll make specific cuts where they just simply don't understand why that is a bad idea. And I don't know if that happens. Here we're pretty small, maybe it doesn't. But I'm just saying, like, sometimes it's a good idea to have them go through the process of thinking about kind of categories, what's essential, what's very desirable and what's a future possibility. Just because it's a way of thinking about things that, okay. And I, and maybe it's not necessary, but.
Well, I think, you're thinking practice, it's going to be what happens. But I think, and I'm already quaking in my boots over what the budget is going to look like next year because of the reality in the world, but also the very real needs that are not in the capital plan. And, you know, the town hall is a biggie and we've ignored it. I mean, we can't go on ignoring it. So when we, I mean, I think the hard conversations that we're going to have, we already know that, that they're coming. But we're going to be sure to communicate them loud and often.
But we're talking about a process, and I'm just suggesting as an ongoing process, not just for this year, that making sure that department heads think not just in terms of what I have to need to get by this year, but what's on the horizon and not necessarily in the capital plan. It's a good process.
When we're talking about the departments and the things that cost the money, we're all pretty aware of, you know, the big deals that we're going to have to do. We're all pretty aware of what those are, so.
Okay, yeah, so maybe it's coal city castle.
You tell them. You tell them.
Coal city castle.
I have, I have a couple other small things to, to think about, which is in budget adoption policy.
Budget adoption policy.
At the end, okay.
We have the third sentence in the first paragraph. In the case of any budget items where the two boards do not concur, both figures will be presented to town meeting. And I know this has been done, you know, it's often been done, the Finance Committee does not approve of this. Or the Select Board does not approve of this.
I don't see any way out of that.
Well, I don't, I, I think we could add in here whether we want actually different figures to be presented. If the Finance Committee wants to buy a used fire truck and we, and the Select Board wants to buy a new fire truck, will we just say, will we put the Select Board's number and say the Finance Committee does not approve? Will we put the Finance Committee number and say the Select Board does not approve? Or will we, like it says in here, put two different figures? I just don't recall that from previous warrants in Monterey, but if we want.
I think it should be, as you say, the Select Board does sign the warrant. And so they sign the budget that they, you know, that we've come up with. If we disagree, then I think that it's always worked out that the Finance Committee does not support this item. So we can discuss it, right, and change it.
Rather than, I mean, the other option would be, like it says in here, where instead of saying the Finance Committee does not support, you could come up with a figure. And the figure could be zero.
Well, we would, we could, we could be, you know, we could have a figure. We could have a proposal that's the alternate. I guess we could make a motion and say, we propose, I'd like to make a motion that we, blah, blah, blah.
I think the question is, is that part, does it become part of the warrant? Or is the obligation then to just say there's dissent and put a hold on the item and put that forward?
And discuss it at town meeting.
And I think either way works, but I think.
Let's clarify it and clarify it.
Is, does it become part of the warrant or is the only thing on the warrant that there's dissension?
It's not that there's dissension, it's that there's some alternative view.
Disagreement. Sure.
And that, I don't know what do you say. I'm, I'm in favor of letting it be decided then.
You say then at the town meeting? Yeah, I, I'm, I agree with you. But I think the number should be out there.
Then, yeah, because I mean, that's the whole point is, the town meeting always has the final say, right?
Right.
But adding the Finance Committee's number rather than just saying the Finance Committee does not approve.
Well, we, yeah, we can write, we can say.
I think, yeah, but because it's.
Yeah. But it can't be like in the columns. You can't have like an extra column or.
For line items, I mean.
I guess, I guess.
What we have to for the line items.
The line items.
Yeah, usually it doesn't seem, or didn't seem to happen too much on the line items last year. It was a lot of special articles, other than we voted last year on the line items as a whole, right? And that's another thing to consider is.
Don't we use them enough? We've always done that. The whole time I've been.
The line items as a whole, don't we just go through?
The finance.
We go first of all, then we go to the line item.
When, when. Sorry, when we were putting out the warrant last year with the budget on it, instead of just voting on the special articles that, that, that had money amounts in them, we also voted and the Finance Committee approved of the operating budget, I think it was two to one. And the Select Board approved of the operating budget two to zero or something. But I think, I tend to agree with how it's written in the policy and other people here have expressed approval of both, both amounts being listed rather than just the Finance Committee does not approve.
I, I'm in favor.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think as much information, I mean, if it gets to the point where we're going to town meeting with two different numbers, that will certainly have been presented to the public at the public hearing. So that the Finance Committee, if they want to commit case for their different point of view.
And, and I think would be appropriate in town meeting for that, you need to express that. Someone's got to, like, as long as it's indicated, you know someone's going to ask, and they should. I'm not suggesting they shouldn't.
Right, no, I think those are all good suggestions, so.
My other, my other thing is, the next sentence, town meeting's budget adoption vote may delete or decrease any programs or amounts. It cannot delete expenditures required by law or for veterans. And I think in Monterey, the common practice has just been that the town meeting's budget adoption vote may change any programs or amounts.
It should not delete expenditures.
Yeah. Because I think in some towns, they don't, moderators won't entertain increases in amounts or they'll only entertain a certain percentage of an increase. But in Monterey, I think the, the common practice has been to entertain changes in amount.
I'm, I'm in favor of it because it.
Yeah, I think.
Causes fewer limits.
It gives more of a way.
So vote may change any programs instead of delete any programs.
Yeah.
Okay.
It is 5:25 and we do have five islands on this agenda.
Okay.
Would, would you be willing, or would people here be willing? I could take some of our changes. I think Melissa's made some of them in real time. And I would add the preliminary before the Budget Workshop. I could get those edits together for an extra meeting. I would take responsibility for that and track changes.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm sure it'll work.
Okay, item number two, review and discuss draft purchasing policies.
Yep, we did that one too.
That one I didn't get your time just to give them a copy.
Oh, no.
I walked in late. Yeah, I walked in late. So I, I had a, I had some. Your ears are included in there.
Yeah, I see it.
I did see, I think the accountant, the accountant said she hadn't seen the statement about if an employee orders items without proper approvals, that they will be held liable for payment?
Yeah, I think that's got to go.
Well, I, I just don't know. It seems like that would be tricky.
Well, you could say it helps with disciplinary action or something like that, but you can't make it like.
Well, no, where is the citation?
Second paragraph under policy on the first page. And it starts in the town's policy.
It's the last part of the sentence, process can be held liable for payment.
So.
So maybe instead of held liable for payment, it could be held.
Well, how about if you know.
To be disciplined for inappropriate expenditures or, I'm, I'm just throwing something out there.
Yeah, yeah, it could be.
How else would you word it?
I would say no employee shall order materials, supplies, or services without prior approval.
But if, but this is saying if they do.
And disciplinary action.
Actually, I'd say it could be subject to disciplinary.
Or how about employees who order materials, supplies, or services without proper rules and adherence may be subject to disciplinary action? Did you catch that, Melissa?
Which page do you want?
First page, second paragraph under policy, the one, the thing that, that, what is it, Laura? Or someone that hasn't seen this statement in policies before, that issue?
Yep.
So employee, instead of what it says, it would read, employees who order, order materials, supplies, or services without proper approvals and adherent to the purchase order process will be subject to disciplinary action.
You can take out, it is the town's policy that.
And just start with any employee.
Any employee.
Just start with any employee, right? Will be subject to disciplinary action.
Right.
Is it will be subject to?
Could be.
Could be, I don't want to make.
Maybe, maybe?
Yeah, you don't.
Does it matter in a certain?
Because then you make a definitive.
Right.
It could, you know, it could be.
Right, right, we want a lot, right, exactly.
You all will make a definitive.
It, it says here the town procurement function is decentralized. Is that true? I thought it was all on you.
Most of it. The library doesn't go for me. Somewhat decentralized, and it's like, no, come. I'm not sure.
It's because of what they have in place.
They do, and plus, a lot of their procurement is very, I think it's very different, like the book ordering policies and the, you know, the law they're covered under, they have a lot of differences. I'm just, I don't know. That's my understanding. I'm no specialist on mine, so.
But so who monitors the, the procurement?
Yeah, but I think it's the board of trustees.
Their trustee.
Trustee, right.
Also, just so we don't go past that first policy thing, you can see my suggestion in there. It took me well into multiple small procurements are prohibited on the second page.
Yeah.
To fully understand that this policy applies to larger purchases. Because I'm like, really, you're going to put out forbidden $10 staples order? Like, that's not weird, right? So I feel like it should say right up somewhere. I don't care where it is, but before you get into the whole policies and procedures, it should be clear that this applies only to the larger things.
Well, and there's.
Or whatever it applies to, it should be clear right there on the first page. You shouldn't have to read into the, like, fifth, sixth paragraph on the second page.
Well, I think the only problem with that might be that, you know, this refers to Chapter 30B. And if mass general law ever changed, we wouldn't want to be, you know, there's different amounts, like, it's usually 10,000. You could explain better.
I love you. You said the same thing I said to the Finance Committee in the four o'clock meeting.
Which is what.
That you didn't want to put specifics in there because if mass general law changes, we have to keep going back and changing our policy.
Um, okay.
I think it should just refer people to Chapter 30B.
You, um.
All right.
What do you do with that or you take? But you, we talked about taking someone's already in the state chapter and just put it in the document, right?
Right, except I think Justin agrees with me that we don't want to put amounts in there because when, when and if the amounts change, we have to remember to change the policy.
Well, and I guess how, how long, the only one that I'm generally familiar with is the 10,000 for a lot of things, but I know that there's different, how big is that chart?
It's not very.
It's not very big, but there's also exemptions. And so we, whatever we do, if we add some specifics or not, we really need to refer to 30B mass general law because someone might say, well, that was $20,000. How come it wasn't, they go through procurement and may not know that it's subject to an exemption.
Well, yeah, but that, you, there's a, the exemption list is pretty long.
Yeah.
You know, if you go into that, so.
How about what we.
That, that's Chapter 149, you know, it's everything, that you don't need a competitive bid for.
How about we say something like, this applies only to procurement issues that fall under Chapter 30B, see it, see it attached. chapter thirty B, see it, see it attached. And you check for updates or something like, it doesn't really matter to me since I'm probably never gonna be having to do this procurement, but if I was an employee, I would prefer to have some idea without having to go look up mass thirty B's current version. That I would know whether or not I had to do that.
Yeah, but if you, if you.
Well, I just don't understand.
But but if you stack, if you took what the numbers for that's currently you put in there, that would be just all working. And then if mass changed a rule later on, doesn't necessarily mean we'd have to do it.
You can even date it, as of date certain this amount was blah blah blah. And then you know if you saw it and it was dated nineteen eighty-four and it's twenty twenty-two, oh, I really better go look at what it currently is.
Can we just put please refer to mass website?
Yeah, for 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 current.
Current information?
Yeah, sure.
Well.
But I I do think it's helpful to the person reading the policy to have some clue of what category we're talking about, what.
Well, let's, I mean, do we agree that any purchasing the town makes over ten thousand dollars should be put out to do?
Oh, yes, that's gonna be.
Yes, so.
Yeah.
So, but like.
But there's a.
Then we should say that that that's just an automatic threshold, never mind what thirty B says about we're saying this, that it's ten thousand dollars or bucks.
So there's some problems, like when we got, we have now twice since I've been on the board for one year uh signed on new legal counsel.
Mm-hmm.
Which is an exemption from uh from procurement, how can you do procurement for legal counsel? Because.
Well, that might be a different, a different thing.
You, all you can do is follow best practices for, you know, looking and categorizing and interviewing.
I think we're talking about tables and trucks and.
No, thirty B is is supplies and services, so.
It's twenty-two or twenty-seven sections.
Yeah, hang on, I'm I'm just looking up the chart, so.
And that's why if you're referring to someone to thirty B, it's like a, it's cutting them down a lot, hold, it's a nice concern.
Twenty-three, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, well.
And if you're gonna require bids for ten thousand, that's gonna put a burden on all of us because we don't have to do sealed bids until over fifty thousand, we just have to get quotes.
Well, then maybe that's not the right word, um, well.
Explain.
So I I would say just refer to the current mass general law thirty B procurement of supplies and services chart. Which can be found on mass.co.
Well, why don't we just copy the chart and put it into our policy?
And data.
Well, it's also, it's also.
As of, as of the date that it's current and uh then it, I mean, do they send a notice if they change it?
Well, I mean, there would be, I think.
It's a registry.
Right, I mean, you may get emails and stuff, but I just would hate to, I hate to make things more complicated by putting information in there that you have to remember to update.
I totally doubt you, but I feel like a policy that's that like I, every time I have to do something on MGL, minimum one hour, lots of frustration, desire to put fist through screen.
How about the paid return return again, you know, you better leave that.
Right, and and that's enough to make you shoot yourself. All of it is, right, all of it is, so I feel like forcing people every time they wanna do procurement to go spend however long it takes to look through that thing to try to find if it's relevant to them is a big ask and makes things harder, not easier. I'm just trying to, and I don't know how to phrase it, and I see your point that there's a lot of exemptions and there's a lot of ifs. But I feel like some general guidance in addition to just go look it up in thirty B would be.
I think there should be dollar amounts in there.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think.
I I I don't know why we actually changed it, uh to when took out each department.
Who changed, you changed it?
That sentence, well, we.
Well, I don't know why you changed it either.
Well, that's all.
I didn't do any of your changes.
Well, you wanted to take out the sentence that each did blah blah blah, and we, we were originally gonna put that sentence above the multiple small procurement prohibitive.
Oh, yes, I wanna take that out.
What what do you wanna take out the?
We're not, that's on page two.
Right.
Do you wanna take out each department most reviewed blah blah blah?
Page two.
Where is that?
On the last.
Uh, multiple small procurement.
The each department in the, the the second sentence, I wanna take that out completely.
Yeah.
Well, if it if it's.
Yeah.
Then it applies only to services and supplies, is that right?
This applies to only services and supplies.
Well, what would, when you do procurement training and procurement law, would the state, I would imagine the state already has something in here that frowns upon making two nine thousand dollar purchases rather than going through procurement.
Right, I wanna keep the split split procurements in there.
Yeah.
But I I think you're complicating it, which I think has been proven by how long we've spent talking about it, by having that second sentence in there.
Well, I just, I feel strongly that a dollar amount should be listed.
We we can attach the procurement chart.
Well, you know, something else.
But we can do, yeah, we talked about making another bullet point, but, yeah, you know.
On the first page.
If you took out that second sentence, but we'd need something that, you know, take some of the wording that's in, that's in the.
Yeah, we'll say please refer to the attached procurement chart for the categories of supplies.
Okay.
That's good.
And just date, date the chart so that, you know, if someone looks at it and it's like, well, is that a date, they can go look it up now.
The other thing I'm, I have confusion about division of responsibility. The town administrator and select board exercises control procurements as it is the sole authority to. But that's two different authorities.
Where where are we looking now?
Sorry, back on page one.
We're looking, uh.
Division of responsibility, the second uh little section. And I'm trying to remember because when we who, there have been different RFPs and such that have come up, and I think the select board, we signed off on them, or we didn't?
Yeah, I'd like you to look at them first.
Yeah.
Especially RFPs because those were our first ones.
Yeah, um but if we could clarify at what amount or, you know, not every time that we're doing a shared purchasing agreement or something like that, is the select board necessarily gonna look at it, but at what amount do we?
Is there a dollar amount or does that?
So I add, as referred to in the the charts, because it would all be based on the charts and the.
Is when this, when it goes in front of the select board?
Well, when it requires the advertisements and bids.
Gotcha.
I mean, if it's not a bid, you wouldn't have to come to us anywhere.
Right, it doesn't have to come for you with the bids, I either, but I like to keep you guys.
In the loop.
In the loop.
So here's the thing, the town's procurement function is decentralized, it says municipal departments should seek assistance of the TA for assistance, well, we got a fork on that grammar, but anyway, then it, the next paragraph says town's control and oversight of all procurements is centralized. Is it centralized or is it decentralized? I mean, to me, it uh it's just like, the town administrator is the chief procurement officer and will assist departments in preparing bids and and the quote, and all that stuff. But that second sentence is not, I mean, it's, it is centralized and we should take out the fact that it's decentralized, right? I mean, you are the procurement officer and everything has to go through you at some point, it's like the budget process, right, I mean.
Well, I guess I kept decentralized in there because we have a lot of departments that buy their own supplies.
But that's not even procurement really at all.
So it is decentralized? Well, it is because, I mean, let's just say, I'm gonna use like a libraries example, if they were going to buy all their paper for the year and it was gonna be, you know, eight thousand dollars worth of paper. They should be, you know, using sound business practices, but, and maybe asking me for opinions, because maybe if we combined it with the town hall's paper for the year, we might be able to get a cheaper, right, um so yes, it is decentralized, you know, and then we have cases where um like the town clerk has her own staples credit card, so she's buying her own supplies, the police chief has his own staples credit cards, he's buying his own supplies.
Well, don't you think we should stop that?
I I was gonna just say.
I think that's gonna come up after, but I'm just trying to explain how it is decentralized right at the moment.
Are there other?
Well, I I still think that, I think that unless you don't want wanted that any procurement, even if they just say I did this, that you're you're a, you're the core.
What happens with operations, because like all the sand and blah blah blah, all the, is that going for you or is he doing it and you just don't, like, how does that work?
Well, everything's. Well, he, he works with me to get the county bid, so he buys all that stuff through the county bid, so it's already approved, it's an approved contract. Um but yes, Jim does work with me now.
But and the only other thing, Michelle, is that every expense is gonna show up on a vendor warrant, right? So it's not like, it's not like there's gonna be money spent and no one knows about it, it's just a question of um making sure that we're following the procurement laws, which when things start to be eight, ten, twelve, fifty, hundred thousand dollars is one thing. If it's a stapler and some staples, I mean, that's a different, this is probably a different discussion for a different time about, but maybe it could come up in here.
And the accountant, when she gets the bills, does question.
Things that she thinks about.
Right, to make sure that the process was followed.
So there's backup checking.
And sometimes won't even write a check, right?
Yes. Right, they can refuse any purchase.
We've had times where the accountant has not written a check, but she deems that it's not a legal expense.
Good, that that's a job, great, great.
Well, so, but I I I think perhaps this paragraph needs to be.
Can I go back and work on this one then?
Yes, I think that would be the best thing to do, because you know how it works and we're just kind of taking a stab in the dark, but
Right.
To say it's decentralized, but then it's centralized, I just think it's confusing.
And and maybe what we, like, if we wanna work towards centralization, we have to figure out where the sticking points are and how, whether we need them changed or not, because sometimes there are divisions of companies that do have their own procurement and isn't, you know, you don't have to fix it in any way.
Right here, I.
Do you have any other sections that are confusing, so when I go back and take a look at it, I can, I know where you're.
Um the one, the one thing that I thought was particularly important, other than what I already brought up, is on page two, under notification of awards. I am recommending we change letter to the low bidder to letter to the chosen bidder, because we just talked about lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And we do have the ability, we just, like, we did it recently because with a hauling, to choose the bid that isn't lowest for other reasons.
Right.
Um and so if that's true, we want to make sure that we allow ourselves to do that, so we should say chosen bidder, that was my logic.
The other thing I would say is since, I'm not necessarily drawn towards including a table of amounts, but it sounds like in general we are, so I don't need to include some numbers, generally they may change, but that the ten thousand one has been around for a long time to my understanding, right, for not so long.
I think it was a little higher at one point.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Can't remember how many years ago, okay, so I will, I will review that and I'll bring it back to the next.
Okay, so that's draft purchasing policy, raise spending limit for Valley Galley by a hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, so I I I mistakenly gave you guys um transfers to do for them, not forgetting that those are um revolving account, and I need you to increase the spending limit instead.
Well, and speak, and on the topic, should, I guess, is it a revolving fund based on its source of income? Or is it, so, because it seems like, I think last year we made transfers to Valley Gala and draft issue, and I just wonder if maybe when we're reviewing the budget, next year in preparing warrant, we could increase.
The spending limit, yes, that was gonna be a suggestion of mine.
Yes. Okay.
So if you can vote to raise it, and both of you need to.
And it is, we both need to, so I would motion that uh the select board approves raising the spending limit for the Valley Gala revolving fund by a hundred and fifty-four dollars for fiscal year twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion, comments?
My only comment is, well, hey, a hundred and fifty-four specifically?
I have two seventy-seven dollar bills.
What are they for, I'm so curious.
Um terminex, okay.
So the uh finance committee.
Uh we didn't, we didn't vote yet.
Oh, we didn't.
Uh Susan.
Yes.
Justin, yes, motion carries.
Um, the finance committee made the motion that we raise the spending limit for Valley Gala by a hundred and fifty-four dollars on those of the low. Second, third, fourth, and we vote yes.
Uh my second vote, I'm sure.
Is that what you wanted?
That was what I wanted, yes, very, okay, let me know.
And internal transfers is the fourth item on this agenda.
Okay, so I have a bunch, um the first one I have is I gave you one that didn't have quite enough to count, so I just wanna see if it's okay, you already approved it to change it from select board other to snow and ice moving it from.
Yeah, which one, what's that?
Uh that was for twelve hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty cents to legal counsel.
Yeah.
If you guys can just go on that, that'd be great.
Yes.
Um and then the other new ones are the probably the sign.
Gotcha, so. Should we just initial it?
Yes.
Yeah, I would motion that we approve um this uh transfer of the purchase.
Those are the same two internal transfers that were in the email today, one was, you know, this is one that you had already approved.
Okay.
For legal counsel, but we're.
Need to change where it's coming from.
We're changing it to um, we're changing it to snow and ice rather than select board expenses.
Gotcha, okay.
Gotcha.
So I would motion that we do that.
Second.
Uh any further discussion, call a vote Susan.
Yes.
Justin, yes, and I'll just initial it.
No, it's definitely their bills, you guys do the same. We need to do the same thing, okay, let me see it so I know what words to say.
All right, and then.
Or do you keep your?
I felt motion, the legal counsel, twelve hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty cents.
If you're gonna give just snow and ice and set up.
All right, second, okay, I I second that that motion to vote yes to the transfer.
I vote yes, we both vote yes.
I just wanna end this one, I think. All right, your new ones are seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and seven cents from storm damage to fire equipment and maintenance. Two thousand four hundred and fifty-eight, yeah, I'm just hoping you change that, where it came from.
Oh, one hundred and fifty.
Two thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents from storm damage to pool. One thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars from snow and ice to tree warding expenses. Two thirteen seventy-one for snow and ice to pressure regional planning commission. Four cents for snow and ice to sanitary inspector.
What's the move transfer?
Four hundred and six dollars and sixty-three cents from snow and ice, the director of ops, just, you know, you're gonna have another one of them.
Just the.
Because when you guys approved of pay Jim, um you guys forgot about Sean's vacation time there, didn't you?
Vacation.
Um, two hundred and seventy dollars from snow and ice to fire department calls and ten dollars and sixty-eight cents from snow and ice to mother care.
I would motion to approve those those transfers as a group.
Second.
Any discussion, comments, uh Susan?
I'm.
Susan's gonna vote.
Yes.
Do you take any travel time?
And Justin votes yes, motion carries. Yeah.
Um, was Sean working the last five weeks that he was on, because I never see him, couldn't get ahold of him.
So I think that the overage in the account was that when an employee um resigns, then we pay them their vacation. That they earned, uh that they haven't used up. And we pay Jim Hunt the same salary, and so there is essentially extra, a few extra weeks of vacation time uh included in, that they overlapped, because technically only Jim was working, Sean had resigned, but Sean already paid out his vacation.
Yeah.
I just, he was gonna try to start meeting with us more, doing something more on the lighting as soon as the tree came down at the community center, and then I didn't uh wasn't able to get ahold of him, but. I think I hear what you're saying, it was, it was overlapped, so, thank you.
Oh, you know what, I'm still. I'm asleep. Just a minute. I don't know how you keep all these things straight. But it's a good thing we didn't, we have money left on the snow and sanding though.
I I definitely love that four cent one, it costs more.
I know, when I got that, I was like, really?
Maybe there should be a minimal, there's a max, but there should be a minimal.
Well, we can't legally overspend even by a second, right, other than child lines.
I knew we had to do it, I really was just.
So now how much do we have left in the snow and sanding?
It was, if that's possible.
All right, where's Elliot's?
So I'm, the next item has to do with library employee hourly rate change for fiscal year '23. I'm going to recuse myself as it would, this matter has a direct financial impact on a direct family member, and I'm going to leave it there.
Yeah, go ahead, play it.
So, as I understand it, Nikki, do you want to join us, so I don't have to train around with my leg up in the air? Thank you.
You haven't gotten to do that actual?
Well, Nikki, I need to do the semi-L, but not the full L. So as I understand this, and if I'm wrong, I'm sure Nikki will correct. Um, the library has trustees have elected to take the salaries that the town approved for the 2023 budget year, which begins in July. And, um, although this previous select board and finance committee, I wasn't on it, I went forward with giving them across the board 3.8% COLA increases according to the minutes of the 22nd of April, I think, April.
Must have been.
It might have been March, I think it was April.
Yeah, it probably was.
March, maybe, March. Specifically 3.8% across the board for COLA, they submitted salary, what is it called, salary rate adjustment?
No, so that, that, that form is something that the treasurer requires for payroll.
Okay.
So when I gave it to the employees, Mark had changed it for himself, and, and so I just want to make sure since.
So this salary rate changes reflect that, um, Mark, because he is Mark, and a very honorable and ethical fellow, has basically given some of the money allotted to him for his COLA to his staff, and therefore not raised his hourly rate that much. And in compensation, has raised it to staff members' hourly rate to, I think, a capital of 5. something percent instead of 3.8.
Five point eight.
Five point eight percent instead of 3.8.
And what's his now, 1.2 or something?
2.4.
Yeah, 2.4, I'm certain. Um, so, I, I am, I sit uncomfortably on the fence on this one, because I it, it is hard having literally done this thing before in my own life, where I arbitrated for a raise, got one, and asked that it be partially distributed to other employees. I would be extremely hypocritical if I.
Let's get that, let, let go, let go.
Uh, well, but I, yeah, but I think.
But the facts of the matter, let's talk about the facts of the matter.
In this particular case, the finance committee, and I suppose the select board as well, both specifically asked, gave 3.8% across the board COLA. Is my understanding, the library trustees both feel that unlike the rest of the town, um, which has not had a personnel review policy in place, that they do have one, and they have been using it, and they feel that um, it is reasonable for them to do.
Do whatever they want.
Performance based, well, technically speaking, they have a lot of jurisdiction of them, and from a legal standpoint, right, we, the only thing that's present in the budget is what the town approved at town meeting, which was as overall salary line, and they are staying within their overall salary line. So you could make a very convincing argument that distributed, how they choose to distribute it is within their right. You could also make a convincing argument that you guys were pretty bitter, again, I'm not on that, so you guys were pretty clear that you wanted it across the board COLA. I see both sides of this, I, I truly do. Um, I don't want there to be any ill will to finance committee and the select board and the library trustees. I also personally feel, well, hey, I don't love the idea that Mark doesn't get his COLA, he's clearly willing to do that, but I do, however, also recognize that those employees, the, the library had a significant COVID. Right, they had to clean, am I correct in saying that? They had to operate very differently during COVID. And I, I know that there are some hoops to jump through to use ARCA monies, um, for employees, and at the same time, it is specifically designated for use to employees whose job descriptions were significantly impacted by COVID, which I believe that these people were, right, they, they had to clean every book and every surface, and they had to maintain that, and that was way out of the normal sphere of their duties. So I personally feel like one option that we could have, and I would want you guys to buy into this, would be to, um, I, I did have back of the envelope calculation, I can get you the figures and how I calculated them, but approximately, um, the difference in the salaries to the two staff members uh, come out to about, approximately $1,000, it's $908.70.
Each or the two?
Total. I would be in favor of taking $1,000 of ARCA money and giving it to the library specifically, because I don't know whether everybody works the same number of hours, specifically to be divided among those two staff members, I would also, I'm assuming Mark also had additional COVID related, and I would propose that perhaps the library trustees could give us an estimate of what that is, so that we could also compensate him, because I legitimately feel it is absolutely a COVID related change. I also, I know that Melissa feels like there are a lot of strictures and hoops to jump through to use those monies in this way. Um, I think that because there are, there are limitations to who can get it, because of how much money they make, there are limitations to who can get it, because you have to show that it legitimately was. There is no doubt in my mind that this was COVID related.
Okay, number one. The library came to the finance committee and the select board, and they asked for a 3% raise for these additional duties. The additional duties did not, I mean, I'm assuming that the library staff got their hours, were paid for their hours, but going forward wanted to pay, to have a raise. Is that correct? They, they wanted to have a raise because their job description had changed, but they were still being paid for their hours, they were so if they were working more hours, they were getting paid for more hours, doing jobs that might not have been strictly what they thought they were going to be doing, right?
I'm not sure of that.
Well, they were, they were getting paid for their work, is that, that's right, right, they were getting paid.
I assume.
They were getting paid.
Right.
And they were getting paid at the rate that, you know, you know, if I have to take out the trash and I wasn't expecting to, I'm still getting paid, right? So, and everybody in town, I think this discussion took place, everybody in town that worked for the town had unexpected additional duties for which they were paid. Right?
As, as soon as they weren't working extra hours for which they were unpaid, that would be true, and I don't know the answer to that question.
I don't think anybody works extra hours and gets not paid, I don't think that's the way we work in town. Am I wrong? I mean, that happens for me, I work extra hours and I don't get paid, but I'm surprised at this. I think the thing that disturbs me is that we went to the town, and after March celebration, we presented a budget that included a 3.8%, and that was not come too lightly, because some people wanted less and some people wanted more. So we went to the town with a budget, and this is what we said we were going to do with the money. Now, obviously, the, well, the library is an autonomous body, kind of like the fire company, and I guess they have the right to do whatever they want to do, but what kind of precedent does this set for taking the money that's been raised by taxation and agreed to in town meeting, and then doing something different? Which is that Mark very, I mean, no one can argue or just be saddened by the fact that Mark is willing to do with $1,000 less, so that his coworkers can have $1,000 more. No one can argue with that, but I'm saying, what if it wasn't Mark? What if it was in reverse? What if the trustees decided to pay a library director more than the 3.8? And the heck with the people that are working. We're relying on personalities, we're relying on people making the right decisions, which this may be the right decision. But is this a precedent? Does that mean that the, the, the votes we take in town meeting and the consensus that we reach can be ignored or not considered because people have other ideas? That's, I'm just raising that question. This is really a, not a significant issue, except that it requires a salary rate adjustment. And does that mean that going forward, this is a policy that's in place? Again, not according to what we voted on at town meeting. So I'm just raising questions about how you'd like to go forward. I'm not going to get in the middle of what the trustees and Nikki and whoever else made this decision did. I'm just saying, is this the way we're going to operate, where the town meeting decides something?
I'd, I'd like to be heard.
Well, I'm not going to recognize you until.
My hand's up.
I don't see your hand, or I'm not able to, uh, and take a little.
My hand is up.
I'm going to stop talking, I think I've made my point, and, um, you know, whatever you want to do is what you're going to do, because the trustees have made their decision, but think about the implications that it has in other.
Um, since Justin isn't here, and this is officially a select board meeting, I will go ahead. Don, cover, would you like to say something?
Yeah, Susan, is, is this something that needs to be decided by the select board? Is, you need a.
Uh, do we have to sign off on it, Melissa?
I, I was looking for it, because I was uncomfortable hitting this when the boards voted 3.8% for all employees, and a change was made to that, so I didn't want this to come back on the select board later with a disgruntled employee or something saying, well, we didn't get 3.8%, or, and it also, you know, how it affects going forward, so the you know, the rates are now different for going forward and, um, adding future COLAs to it than what we had originally projected. So I, I just wasn't comfortable passing this along without getting
Raising the.
Finance and select board approval from them.
Does that answer your question, Don?
All right, my points, but, no, my point, Susan, is that one selectman, I don't believe can decide something just because the other one has recused themselves. I think before you vote on this, you have to check with your attorney, because I think he may tell you that the rule of necessity says that Justin can vote on this. I don't think you can decide something by a single vote, but you should check with your lawyer.
Donna is on, by the way. She's on, oh, so he's arguing that Justin can vote because of the rule of necessity, or that, I mean, you can make, Donna, can you weigh in here?
Yes, so Don is correct, you, you can, you have to invoke the rule of necessity, because you can't uh, operate, you can't take action as a board with only one member voting. But there's a process for invoking the rule of necessity, which is disclosing the reason for the recusal. Um, Justin would say that he is uh, confident that he can rule on this fairly, and then, um, invoking the rule of necessity, and you have to make a record of that. And then he can vote and then participate fully as a member.
Okay, um, I will do that right now, Donna, if that's all right with you, so we can move, move along and get to the bylaw review committee joint meeting. Um, so, clearly, the library director, Mark Maycock, is my father, and he's related to me as my father. And, you know, this, the outcome of this decision either way would directly impact his financial status. But, uh, and so I would norm, I would recuse myself, and I did, but as a rule, as the rule of necessity states, we can't make a decision if I don't, if I'm not involved, because there's only one remaining select board member. Um, and I, and I believe that I can make the decision fairly, i- i- in a way that's not based on my relation to Mark Maycock. Um, it's, it's pretty clear to me that the, the amount of money, uh, they're staying with that, within the amount of money that was allocated at town meeting, and it is a decision being made, or that was made by the library board of trustees, um, which, uh, has authority over the library and the library staff and the library building. And I think that we should respect that authority of the library board of trustees and, and respect that, you know, it's an amount of money that was, uh, voted on at town meeting, and what was voted on at town meeting was the amount of money in that line item, and while, you know, it was said that the line was changing by this amount, because it was going to be this raised to each employee. Uh, at the end of the day, you know, so much money was appropriated for library staff, and they're not agreeing to go over that by, by, they're not agreeing to go, go over that, just readjust where the money is, is spent.
I just want to throw in here that as far as my reading of the minutes of town meeting go, there was no hold on that lineup. So there was no discussion, all that the town voted on was the amount, to my knowledge, based on those meeting minutes and my memory.
Is correct.
So the town voted on the amount, the only record of it being specifically for COLA is two sentences that appear in the minutes of one meeting.
So I, so I think, I don't know if we need to vote on this, I think it's really a matter more up to the library board, board of trustees.
Do we want to hear if the library board of trustees representative wants to add anything to the composition?
Uh, I, I believe that we acted in good faith and, uh, honorably. We certainly weren't doing anything that we thought was egregious, uh, actually, Mark approached me before the meeting. I went to the damn as in, I'm an exit. Uh, you know, because we all disturbed that this phrase had gotten to the way we, which we gave because our employees deserve it, they have gotten, gone through evaluations and everything else. And we've only once ever not followed COLA rules, I mean, that's ridiculous, because we do have the authority to do that. We always follow the rules, that we just do the COLA, because that's what finance, like we'll say, and we just felt that they deserved a little bit more, I mean, they're not getting more than, um, how much more, a, a dollar ten cents is their raise per hour. And when Mark said, I'm just, I'll, I'll just give it all back, I said, no, you can't do that. I said, if you can work something out where you think you can give, you want to give them some more, you know, then approached the trustees, and that's what he did, so he he made the adjustment where they're just getting a little bit more, just to bring it over a dollar an hour. And it's not a whole lot of money that we're giving them extra, but it's, it's just a feeling that they know that we're standing behind them and for the work that they are doing for the library. And this is not just a general, everybody gets a COLA raise, because everybody gets a COLA raise, it had no meaning as to the work that you are performing, the growth that you have made personally, each staff member. Those things have not been respected, when everybody gets the same thing, why should anybody work COLA?
Because you want to.
No, uh, you know, and there are some people that do that, but there are other people who will say, well, I should, I mean, if I'm going to get the same things he's going to get, why should I work COLA and he's going to work? So I could just be the laziest person and get as much money as anybody else.
Well, Nikki, come on. No, and I'm just.
Nobody there is that kind of person, and anybody who is that kind of person, well, I think we should shut them the door. I mean, I, I just want to say that during the whole budget process, I don't think.
I mean, I, I just want to say that during the whole budget process, I don't think anybody was wanting to disparage or dismiss all the extra effort that everybody put into the town's survival and, and-
I didn't say that.
Well, I, I'm, you know, I'm, nobody's disrespecting them for the work that they did. There's two employees that you're referring to. And my only concern in this was just that, okay, maybe this year we blew it and we should have given them a raise, but during the budget negotiations, everybody was trying to balance all of the different demands being made from a finite amount of money. And if we hadn't had the free cash that we had, we would have been in a very difficult position. So I, I just think it's important, I think it's great that Mark did this. I think we should just understand the potential for this being a problem in the future and that certainly you can-
I can, I don't understand.
Well, I think that the 3.8 cola was hard to get to. A lot of people didn't even want to go there. And some people like Donna wanted to do 5.2 or 5.8. I mean, you're just balancing a lot of different issues. And I want to personally, you know, apologize to you for the, the not being able to give them the raise. We did the best we could and I think Mark went the extra mile and maybe next year he won't have to do that. But just changing something, you know, it has a ripple effect. It might have unintended consequences. That's my, my concern. And I think we should just accept what you've done and move on because you have other needs.
I'm good with that. I, I'm going to throw in one last thing so that it's on the record, which is that I am very happy that we will be addressing our employee handbook this year because I think we're long overdue as a town for having a policy that has a proper thing in place for annual reviews and for rewarding people for good work, not just great cola raises and for anything. We need to have a whole structure in place, whether it's steps or taps or whatever, so that doesn't get out of hand. But I think we're all long overdue for doing that and I'm happy that that process is going to go forward.
Melissa-
It's not relevant to that exactly, but it's relevant to the paper.
Sure.
Well, it would, it would be nice to see that, you know, everybody else is brought up to my standards because they have not been and I-
Yep.
So what, so what did, what did we decide?
I-
One second, sorry. Melissa, do we need a motion to convince the treasurer to accept this request?
No, I just, I, I wanted you guys to-
Okay.
You want to see us mix it up, huh?
Like I said, I didn't want this to come back on you, like, could be unintended consequences.
So I'm in support of the change. I, I wish that we could compensate Mark as well, but I'm in support of this change. It keeps it within the budget line and if Mark is comfortable doing it, which he must be because he signed off on it and it was his idea, I'm okay with that.
So we will, I would, you know, why don't we motion? A motion that the select board will respect the library board of trustees' decision as to library staff leave this for fiscal year '23?
Second.
Any further discussion or public comment? There being none, vote, Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, motion carries. And I think that brings us to an end of our joint meeting with the finance committee.
How does it look?
I think you should probably, we're not going to adjourn.
I make a motion that the finance committee adjourn.
Can I ask, can I ask a question before you adjourn?
Of the finance?
My question is, is the select board going to, is, is the finance committee short one person? And if so, is, is the select board going to appoint a replacement?
No, the finance committee is not short one person. We have had an absence while the person is making a transition and we will be holding our regular finance committee meetings at 7:30 on Tuesdays, starting on the night of 12. Okay? Yeah. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I'm delighted with the answer.
He said yes.
I'm delighted.
So, uh, the motion was made.
A second.
Both Frank and Michelle are in favor of adjourned finance committee portion of the meeting. Good night, I think.
So the next item on our select board agenda is a joint meeting with the bylaw review committee. So welcome to, it looks like everyone needed, to the bylaw review committee.
Stuart's got to come.
Oh, I see Stuart online.
Oh, he's on.
So, David Stewart. Um, and I believe you've already opened your meeting. You're still in meeting? Yes.
Yes.
So we don't have to adjourn that meeting. And also thank you, town council, Donna Brewer is on the Zoom. Thank you for joining us.
Happy to be here.
So just for a little background, Donna, because I, I failed to actually, I might have failed to explain to you, but at the annual town meeting of 2021, the town voted to create a bylaw review committee, which was initially appointed until this year's town meeting in May, at which point we reelected all of the five appointed members. So they've been at work through the fall and winter and spring, reviewing the bylaws and, and they have some questions for the select board and some questions for council. Now, I will lead with, you know, now that you're an elected committee, um, you're not, I mean, ultimately, the advice goes to the select board to add potential revisions to the warrant, but you really are, you have your own authority as an elected committee, in my view.
Just clarify, authority to do what?
To make recommendations to the select board. But you're not, but you don't directly answer to the select board because you're elected. Okay. So Stuart-
But we do, that said, we do appreciate your coming to talk to us about your process and anything you want to share with us. We always welcome that and we'd like to be kept apprised and we're happy to offer our thoughts if you wish them.
Is there someone, Stuart, do you want to speak on behalf of the bylaw review committee and lead off this discussion?
Uh, I think that we have some people who are present who can handle that. So I don't know, is David or Mario?
I'm right here, Stuart. You just can't see me, but I'm behind the camera.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And Mario's here. Yeah. So thank you. Uh, yes, Stuart had asked this in our meeting before, if one of us, and I said Mario and I could do this. So Donna, thank you for being here. I know you can't see me because I'm behind the camera, but I'm David Myers. I'm one of the committee members. And we have several questions that we want to ask, some of which are of the select board, some of which are of you. We know your time is valuable. One of the big questions we had is what is the difference between an ordinance and a bylaw?
So an ordinance is something adopted by a city and a bylaw is adopted by a town. We're only going to be adopting bylaws.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. Committee members, did you have any further questions on that one? That was the one we wanted to lead off on.
I guess I just have a quick clarification. Are bylaws about the governance of the town or can they be specific? Like, I'm going to just make up, this is Jeff Zimmerman, Donna, glad to meet you. Can they, or can they be very specific, like the fine for parking in the wrong space is that, is such and such? Is that a bylaw or would that be something else?
It can be by bylaw. It can be by regulation. It, it, the bylaws do generally include a fine schedule. So probably that would be a bylaw. But, but keep in mind, bylaws are only adopted and amended by town meeting action. Policies and regulations can be changed by the adopting board or committee. So typically, for example, let me go with a personnel bylaw. Personnel bylaws should be very broad and not overly detailed. So you would say in your bylaw that you're going to authorize, let's say, the board of selectmen to adopt personnel policies pursuant to the bylaw. And the policies then would have the details about vacation leave, sick leave, and hiring practices and all the rest, so that when it needs to be changed, it can be changed more easily than a bylaw.
And how would the concept of regulation fit into all of that, too? That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, the regulations, again, you would have in your bylaw that you were authorizing some board or committee to adopt regulations pursuant to the bylaw.
Okay. So an example of a regulation might be that there's no swimming in the lake after dark.
Right.
The park, and we, and the bylaw could authorize the parks commission to make a regulation like that.
Exactly.
Got it. Thank you. That's very helpful.
Coming off the question that Jeff just asked Donna, since he did move in to, I think he mentioned fines, you, we're talking about that. One of our other questions was, we have a whole bunch of fines defined all through our bylaws. And we have discussed several strategies to help simplify these into a class A fine, a class B fine, et cetera, and define those elsewhere. Is that something that the SB, that we would ask the SB or whomever to come up with the regulation so that could be changed more easily?
You can give it a try. What I'd say is typically, the attorney general reviews all bylaws. So typically, the attorney general will look to see that a fine is for a specific amount. You can't have a bylaw or a fine of, in any town action that's going to say something like up to $100. It has to have a specific figure. So the one thing I question is whether the attorney general's office is going to support and approve a bylaw that just says a class A fine if the class A fine is defined only in regulation or in policy. It may. And luckily, the attorney general's office, their municipal law unit, is really responsive and I have a good relationship with everybody in that office. And they very much will contact and communicate with us before a bylaw is passed to see if it will pass muster.
Could you have-
I would ask.
Follow up on that. Could you have a bylaw that says, class A fines are $50, class B fines are $100, class C fines are $200, and these are the things that are class A, class B, class C?
Yes, that would absolutely be fine.
Okay.
I'm intending.
It would be fine. It would be fine. It would be fine to have those fines. Took it like-
Yeah. Just a little slow, that's it.
What about the first question, Stuart? Wait, I mean, I'm-
So this one, I guess, is a question both for council as well as for the select board. And it may seem like we should know the answer to this already, but I guess briefly put, what is our charge? Are we supposed to generate an entirely brand new document and full revision of everything and reorganize it? Or are we supposed to propose, suggest individual line edits to try to make things a little more understandable?
So I think that your charge is what town meeting passed and the attorney, and what was, how it was revised at this most recent town meeting, okay? Which isn't specific other, other than, I mean, you, you have it, right? Attorney general case, you changed. I don't know if I have the changed wording. It's not very specific, but I think we could probably, the select board could get back to you because ultimately you are making recommendations to the select board. But what I see here is she'll be tasked with reviewing the town's bylaws, proposing revisions and additions there, too. And then the revisions and additions that, that you've come up with, initially, they were going to be included directly on the warrant and we're not allowed to do that. So they will be recommended to the select board who made, which may include them on the warrant. But, I mean, it's, it's vague. I think it's, now you're elected, you can, you can do what you want. But I think if you focus on all the bylaws and probably not zoning bylaws.
Yes. And we don't intend to do those.
And I'll just put out there that at the very least, what I would love to see is that it, it's pretty clear that bylaws as posted on the town website are not current and up to date. And at the very least, I would like to make sure, at least to my observation, correct me if I'm wrong, but it, I would love to see it updated because it's not an uncommon thing. Donna has even said that towns don't regularly keep those completely up to date. And I know we have some really old bylaws that possibly need to be, what would that be, revoked or revised? Or even, even removed and we take it off the bar, like, you know? But I would love to see us have a clear revision that maybe, you know, we have an old thing and another thing and another thing that we consistently changed. It would be nice to have clear what's currently active and to have it revised in any way that makes it easier to understand, more compact and more direct for people to grasp.
By the way, how much time do we have?
Well, as you saw in our last meeting, you have as long as you want.
So, uh-
No, it's okay.
Let's just keep it your own length.
We don't have, we don't have any appointments, so.
Right.
So I have a, I have a follow-up question on that really quickly. So are you, are you saying that it would be better because it says revisions and whatever the other word was?
Additions, yeah.
Additions. So it would be better than if we had a document that had crossouts, right? And then our revisions? So they could see what it used to be.
Right.
What I'm also seeing done is both.
Yeah.
Is doing both, is you do a track changes document with the crossouts and then you do a clean document that doesn't have track changes. So this is a new thing, suggested, a proposed new document that's clean without the track changes. So if somebody wants to just read it-
To see how it flows without all the changes.
They can do that without having to say, well, paragraph E6 is now paragraph two and I've got to follow that up and they can just see how it flows.
And if I can recommend for the bylaw review committee, all of the general bylaws should all be assigned article numbers and all in one document. So you shouldn't have the revolving fund bylaw, a standalone separate bylaw. You shouldn't have your bylaw review committee bylaw, a separate standalone bylaw and so forth.
Right. Different articles with subsections if we have to address different things under that bylaw.
Exactly.
So are you saying on a website that it should all be one document also?
Right. You're going to have one document that's going to say town bylaws, articles 1-
125.
Yeah. And, and another one that's going to say zoning bylaws.
Excellent.
Can I just ask another question that just came to mind that we've struggled with in our meetings? It seems that some of the things that are called bylaws, that have that word on them, were actually a notice of the tabulation of a vote. It was like the report of a vote, that the town meeting, the town meeting decided to do thus and such, but it was listed as a bylaw. And to me, that's confusing because it's not really necessarily a bylaw about how we're running the town, you know, on a sustained basis. I'm making this up, this was not one. But the town decided it was going to have a festival on May 1st. That's made up. That's not a bylaw, even if it says it's a bylaw, is it? Or is it?
So I guess the first question I'd ask is, was it submitted to the Attorney General's Municipal Law Unit for approval?
Oh, good point.
Good point. Do not know the answer to that one.
Okay, thank you.
So, but I mean, some, one of the examples that Stuart was talking about, I can't give you book in verse, but like, the town voted to accept the regulations of MGL, chapter blah blah, section blah blah, talking about insurance policies. Does that have to be a bylaw? I mean, we're just basically saying we accept MGL.
Right, so typically what town clerks will do is they will create at the end of the bylaws, a list of all of the local acceptance statutes that were accepted and when they were accepted. Because you're right, those aren't bylaws, and unless you keep track of them that way, you do not know in the future whether a statute was locally accepted or not. And it becomes critical sometimes when you're looking at what your authority may be.
Donna, do you by any chance, is there any excellent example of properly done town bylaws that perhaps the committee could use as the sample that they're working towards?
Sure, I'm aware from my time as Town Council for Hamilton that they have on their website both their general bylaws as well as a list of all of the special acts that were accepted, or the special acts that were applied, or the local acceptance statutes that were accepted and when. There are more I can give to you if you want it, but that would be a place to start.
Thank you.
The last question I have is just, how would this, how would this appear on a town meeting warrant? It seems like it would be a very lengthy document, but it would need to be posted along with the warrant. How, how would that work?
You mean, the, the bylaw changes you want to make?
Yeah.
So the, you can do the bylaw changes as a, a, an exhibit or as a, an attachment to the warrant, but you don't need to make it part of the warrant. So the warrant would just have the warrant article that would say something like, to see if the town will amend the town bylaws as set forth in Appendix A of the warrant. And then the appendices or the exhibits don't get posted, but they are available at the town clerk's office.
And furthermore, how would the process look at town meeting? Would the moderator read each change until he heard a hold? Or how would that, would each change need to be voted on individually?
No, you, well, we can talk about it with the moderator about what way works best, but no. What you can do is you can have one motion on the entire change. And it can, without having to read the whole thing, you can say, as shown, or adopt the language that was provided to all town meeting attendees. And a copy of the amendments will be given to the town clerk for the record of this town meeting. Then you could go through section by section, not reading it, but the moderator would say, section, Article 1, rather than going section by section. I go article by article, say, if you want to put a hold on Article 1 to have a separate discussion on it, shout out hold, and then after you've gone through all the articles that are going to be amended, then you would say something like, I will take, entertain a motion to approve all the articles, excepting for those articles that were held. And then vote ultimately on each one that was held.
Thank you.
You guys have any more questions for Donna?
Yes, this is one that we didn't fully highlight, but it is an interesting one. We have a bylaw that has to do with peddler's licenses and Peddler's Act. Is this even a legal bylaw?
Well, I'll have to take a look at it to be sure because there's certainly been some case law on what you can do with peddlers and what you can't. But typically, you can require them to go to the police and get a license before they're going to be going around.
Okay.
And I'm sure that we'll follow up this conversation, you know, it's still very much an ongoing process, I'm understanding, with specific questions as the bylaw review committee goes along.
I, I just have one quick question, Mari, Enoch, I'm also on the committee. If we find a, a bylaw that was voted at town meeting, perhaps was never submitted to the AG's office, or we can't, we just can't prove that it was, does, does it go back to town meeting to revote it in? Or how would we deal with that?
No, you can submit it to the Attorney General's office now. You'll just need to be sure that the town clerk would need to provide the certified vote.
Great, thanks.
All right, thank you for your time, Donna. Really appreciate you.
Yes, thank you, Donna.
You're welcome. Take care. Bye.
Have a good night.
You guys just remember that you do have a process for, you guys are elected. You do have a process for boards and committees to get time with the town attorney. There's also, if you make a list of your questions, it gives you time to actually word them. And you can, you can forward them to her via email, and she can forward you written answers. So no, no necessity to remember exactly what your wording was. But that is a process that exists, and what you guys are doing has a lot of legal ramifications. So it's, it's a great choice to use that opportunity.
When do you need our suggestions if you want to get them in to a warrant for a town meeting in 2023?
So we have to post the warrant seven days in advance of the annual town meeting?
But if you wanted to have enough time to get council to review it, to make sure we have a good process in place, to see if there are things we need the AG to look at. Before we do that, I'm going to say it would be smart to do it to try, to shoot for January, so that we would have enough time for several iterations of back and forth to make sure we have. This is going to be a big process at town meeting. I'm going to put out there that giving us more time to get all of those things as smooth as possible before we try to take it to town meeting is going to serve us well. And I think we also want to think about how we want to put out the suggested changes to, like, what formats. I think having something ultimately online would be great, but we also have to accommodate people who maybe don't do that, maybe have written ones available at the library as well as town hall. Just make it as accessible as possible for anyone who wants to look over them before town meeting. So that, because it's complicated enough, we don't want people to have to make those calls right at town meeting. We can avoid it. And we might even want to think about, should I call it even hearings? No, like the public presentation, sort of like the finance committee does.
Like the FCA does, yeah.
Um, to let people come and talk to you about why. Because the more that we get done before town meeting, the more smoothly the whole pr- and there, I, some people have talked to me about their concerns that you're going to, like, undermine the process. I'm like, guys, this is a mess. We need to get it fixed, right? And, and I think people may need reassurance that really what we're doing is trying to just get everything organized and every I dotted and every T crossed and made more accessible.
So our struggle, and I, Stuart's still here, but it's on the, um, our struggle, I think I can speak for Mike Talley's on this committee, is that because of the open meeting law, you know, you take a document, let's say the document is 50 pages. I don't know how long it ultimately is, but let's say it was 50 pages worth of text. It was a, it was a novelette. It was a short story, 50 pages. We can't, we can't edit that in a quick, efficient fashion, except when we're meeting. Because we can't pass it back and forth, otherwise that's deliberation from our understanding. If we're wrong on that, that would be a blessing, but I don't think we're wrong on that.
You're not wrong.
That, that would be, I didn't want to waste the attorney's time on that.
I, I did, by the way, even contact the AG's office.
Yeah, so that would.
They would ask me to. There is one thing I could suggest to you. I don't know how well it would work for you, and I'm going to run it by to see what these guys think. But you guys have a secretary? Do you have someone acting as a secretary?
Yeah, I mean, someone takes the minutes.
I do minutes and David takes the document update, but.
Okay, so what I was going to say is if the committee were to appoint someone, and I'm going to call it a secretary, but we can rename it. And that, let's say you were all working on, making this up, Articles 2 through 8.
Right.
Between this meeting and the next. And everyone submitted their individual suggested edits to this secretary. The secretary could prepare, what would you call what you do with the minutes?
A track change.
A track changes document showing everyone's suggested edits, possibly even printed in color, which makes it so much easier to figure out what's going on. So that when you, you can't deliberate it, and that person can't distribute it at that moment. But at the meeting, that track changes document with everybody's changes could be distributed for discussion. Is that a process that you would need with me the OML rules?
I am not familiar with the secretary work around. I don't, no, I'm not aware of that, but.
Donna, also, do we want to ask council if that would work?
I think as long as the secretary is not distributing it to everybody.
And is not a member of the committee.
Well, no, because you have five members.
Yeah, one would not be a quorum.
But one is not a quorum, but each, each, each individual.
But if there's no back and forth.
But it's still not a quorum. She's two and two and two and two.
That is true, but I recall that the Chair of the Select Board of Neighbor in Town was in violation when he gathered up information because then he was influenced when he did his by everybody else. That did happen. Remember this big debacle?
Yeah, it's always having to kind of make sure to review.
I think it's a separate person, like when the town.
I'd be more than happy for you to send them to me, and I will put them in one document for you.
Well, or the, or the other thing I was just going to say is if the town is hiring someone who's going to be doing minutes and things for other committees, maybe we could avail ourselves to that person.
So one person or another.
That, that would help a little.
The other thing you could do, the other thing you could do, and I don't know if you really want to do it, but is you could post meetings in between your meetings where all you do is share documents back and forth, but.
You mean, like, online sharing on Monday night, we're all going to get online and dump it all in?
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you post a meeting and you do it in an open to meeting.
Yeah.
It's a little bit of a pain, which, you know, we've dealt with the same thing with our minutes, and often it just takes an extra week, but we meet much more frequently than you all.
And it's a big job, what you're doing, and the changes are hard to track, so I totally get it. And I, I did, by the way, even ask the AG, what was an openly publicly available document? So that anybody, and it, and the link was posted, so that anybody who wanted to could go and look at what you were doing, even if they couldn't comment on it, and they still said, I would advise against it. I was like, okay.
So we'll do the best we can to get it to you in early January.
Look, if it's.
We're making progress.
I was just going to say, if it's only half of the job, if it's only X percent of the job, that is more than was done.
Yeah, if we, if we gave it, just give you part of it in January and part of it in February.
Or part of it in the, in the, for the 2023 town meeting and part of it for the 2024 town meeting. Nobody wants it to take that long, but sometimes big jobs take longer than you want it to.
And especially with the system that we're working on.
Right.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Thank you. And some of you are signed up for three years, so we appreciate it. Is that, does that include our joint meeting? I believe you're, you're not a journey.
We're not a journey because we're going to do a follow-up meeting.
Yeah.
So we're still in meeting.
But are, is that?
It'll take a little break.
We're going to take a pause.
I think that, everything I know of.
Okay, well, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having us.
And maybe the forest be with you.
Thank you.
Never hesitate to reach out for another joint meeting or likewise, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you, we, can we, can we, can we, yes?
Thank you, Stuart.
Thank you.
Thanks you both for that.
Sorry.
I don't think I'm supposed to share.
Justin, can you give me a little?
What's that?
Do you know what's that, right?
Yes.
You got a three?
Okay.
Yeah.
Hopefully, within a couple of weeks, I'll be. Really? Open, unlike this close to walking without my friend, so.
If I can get the boot off my foot, I can drive.
I don't think you can drive without a boot.
No, yes.
I, I have to tell you, though, I had an aunt who washed her leg. She, you know, she had older bike issues. She rode the artificial leg over the hump car.
Driving a Lego.
And driving a Lego. But it, it fell all of one day while she was pulling into her version of Humpy's. Oh my gosh, and she had a little event.
Well, may I not have that answer?
You think about the whole thing.
I'm not worried.
So moving on, we've, we've been meeting, but joint meetings. And moving on to our select board only agenda, Old Business Number Six, Set Deadline and Approve Request Form for Disbursements of Remaining on American Rescue Plan Act Funds. So this was a form, Susan, that you had last week, and I edited. And if you think it's worth, if you think it's worth going through this tonight and trying to approve it tonight, I'm fine with that. I'm also fine that if you think you have significant enough edits, we can just return to this at, at our next meeting.
So there is no track changes in that one, because I thought that you were doing like a clean document, like.
Yeah, yeah. There certainly were. I made, I made, I made, I made changes. I don't know if my track changes feature was even turned on or not.
Yeah, it didn't come across with any, I think.
But look, it, I'm, it's a big deal, and if you want to.
I wouldn't mind having the chance to, just out of curiosity, why is the date, like, this is just a simple thing. Why is date submitted on the, like, the last thing? It's one of the easiest things to put on.
There is no reason in particular.
So it can date me in contact, or like, right by, like, normally, you know, you do date, date right beginning of.
Certainly. So do you want to, to?
Yeah.
To speed, to speed this process up?
Yep.
Well, slow it down, but speed it up. You have this, I, you have this for the, until our next meeting.
Okay.
And then we'll prove it. And that, that, goes with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for, for doing that, Kevin.
Well, it was based on your form. I think I added some logistical things and a couple of questions and.
And honestly, I, the, the whole point of having more than one of us is to have more than one break working on a problem. I, that's a good thing for my benefit.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the next thing, the next thing on our agenda is we're, review and approve draft letter to the new Human Resource Director laying out monaries, initial rules. So I agreed to write a letter to the Human Resource Director, who is beginning Tuesday. This is the same thing. If you want a week to review this, we had worked on the priorities list. I made edits.
I will look at the other at the moment. One thing I think we might want to edit, I, I don't like, because I just thought of this. I'm not sure how it would fit in here, but I think that we should make clear that we are hoping for, for feedback on further prioritizing list. Because while these are all priorities, you can't do them all at once.
Yeah.
And I think she, like, she doesn't know our specific situation, and maybe we need to have a joint meeting with her as she comes up, an onboarding meeting, to help us go through that and set priorities, because I think that would be a good idea. But I think it's really important that we get feedback from her based on her experience on reasonable expectations for, like, feedback on prioritization and reasonable expectations on the timing of that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Do you want to work on how you're going to word that in? I'll look at the priority list changes.
Well, I had, please do not hesitate to share your own assessment of our situation and your goals for our town, as well as any comments that you have on our priority list.
Okay, that works.
Um.
Yeah, that works. Do we wanna ask for that for a meeting with her? Like I I feel like I'd like to meet her at some point and and get the feedback. It doesn't have to be day one, but um, do you think that's a perfect? I don't really know, but.
Yeah. Is it, is it necessary for this letter? Uh, we put it out, it took a couple of months.
Well, I think the topic is like, I don't know it has to be in this letter, but I think we we have to decide to do it before it didn't happen.
He could sign off. We we hope to be able to meet with you in the near future.
Right.
Instead of.
So we hope to be able to meet with you in the near future to, um, to discuss.
Just to meet with you.
How this process will proceed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So can we add that sentence, please, as it's standalone paragraph after the third paragraph before the signature? We hope to be able to meet with you in the near future.
I'd be clear progressive discipline director.
I think you focus on something rather than both something.
Really?
The second bullet, the second black bullet, put a particular focus on resolving.
Yes.
Do you agree?
I agree.
Do you know where we are?
That was probably a typo. There are problems with sitting on your couch with a pole on your lap and trying.
Well, I think I edit, I I I resolve in conflict.
Yeah. No, I liked it. It's good. It was a good addition. I don't mind that to allow for raises being included in the budget, but I'm not to allow for, um, employee compensation being adjusted in the budget.
Yeah.
Not that I'm suggesting we reduce everybody's salary, but, um.
Yeah. Yeah, so we can just change it in the parentheses to allow for um, compensation adjustments to be included in the budget.
Okay. I it's not, it's not a big enough thing that I I don't know if, uh, suggestion for for like I don't know if suggestions for options regarding annual pay increases, step structure raises and salary caps belongs underneath a valuing competitive nets. I actually think they're two separate things. Right?
Yeah.
One has to do with the process of, um, identifying whether our pay structure is okay in terms of other towns.
Yeah.
The other has to do with what people's expectations are when they are an employee of how like within this, how high can I go? Is it reasonable to expect that I'll get a pay raise every year and is that gonna go on forever? Like, because that's not always the case, right? Sometimes you have to change classifications. So I I would like that bullet to go back to the other.
I agree, yeah.
Yeah. All right. I think that looks pretty good.
So we got a clean copy.
I like really hates meetings. Anything else on here I I figured have online that is needed to be.
Anyone on that one?
So anything else on board tonight?
That, that what?
Are are we meeting with anyone that I that I need to be here for?
Well, you should probably, if you're interested in the town charter committee status, since you're on the town charter committee.
All right, so that's.
All right.
Okay, if I.
Do we wanna move it around so we can go?
No, we won't move it around.
Okay.
But, uh, we'll just continue to go in order.
See you. What's the number little dots at the bottom?
I don't know. We're getting our new copier. Oh. I'm like, that's not fair. What are the dots on there? I can't figure out how to fix it, but our new copier is coming on the twelve, so. It's a little even. The dots will go away along with the old cup. Maybe it's not. Maybe it's an internal thing with the building. I hope not.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, motion to approve this letter to the new HR director.
Second.
I'll vote yes, Susan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well done, senior.
And moving on. Fiscal year, twenty-three appointments and reappointments. So as long as it's all right with you, I will read this list, listing each position, term line and person's name. Uh, and if you have any questions, put a hold.
I, uh, so I have a meta issue with the list.
Yes.
Two, two actually. One, was, am I correct that you reached out to some people to make sure you weren't gonna try to accuse someone instead?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So so we we do have that none of these people are not on here with us.
Well, there was one guy who didn't answer his phone. We don't understand why, but he's still there.
You can, you can never know for sure.
Sure, of course.
I tried to reach out mostly, I think mostly to select board advisory committees like.
Okay.
Oak Park Hill Working Group.
Right.
Renewable Energy Working Group because they advise the soft board, obviously.
Okay.
Um, it was every person on this list reached, not by any means.
Okay.
I, I thought it was a good goal and, uh.
That that's fine. And Melissa did show me the letter that gets sent that gives them an opportunity to respond. So if someone's not willing to serve, presumably they will let us know. Um, all right, so I have.
So if somebody dies, a family, we tell us they died.
Right.
I don't know because I think somebody I I was writing Christmas cards and letters to, she was like, sure she's dead, I gave up.
All right, now I have a few other things that I feel like I would like to have worn by, um, town council.
Yeah.
Number one, the town accountant and treasurer.
Mm-hmm.
I feel like it's strange to have individual people's names there for two reasons. Number one, we already have an existing contract. Why are we appointing people when we've already signed a contract with a firm?
Mm-hmm.
Number two, if we have to have it by law, which I suspect we don't, but if we do, I feel like we should have the business name there and not the individual name.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess first we have to ask Donna if the treasurer and accountant need to be on this list.
Yeah.
Since we have contracts and if we do, I would like to see us put the firm name rather than the individual's name.
Yeah.
That was number one.
I have wondered about that same thing, uh, before, but I never raised it.
Um, okay, uh. So are there, you know, what specific paid town positions are required on MGL to have regular appointments and reappointments? And under which exact provisions of MGL would be a question I'd kind of like to ask her.
So, so is that a a separate question?
Yes.
Is what positions are required to?
That would cover all of them.
What particular appointments are required to be?
Under MGL to have regular appointments and reappointments? And under which exact provision of MGL so that we actually know what we're appointed under? Um, and then because some things are just, um, peculiar in my personal estimation. Uh, this, some specific ones I'm worrying about would include field driver and fence dealer.
Yeah.
Um, can we remove them?
So, yeah, and we're not appointing any one-two field driver.
Right, we're not.
Or fence.
But since this list is in front of us and these have probably been put on here year after year after year after year and we're revising the list, why don't we find out if they can just, do we need to have them because it's some MGL rule or can this? Like, come on, no one's doing these things. We can't find anyone to serve for them. If we have to find someone to serve for them, field rider and fence dealer specifically, can we give those jobs to the building inspector? Would be another dumb one there.
But I think it's it's pretty clear, I think, to both of us that if groups at the soft board has appointed as advisory committees like Barfield Working Group, Renewable Energy Working Group, just as a couple of examples.
Right.
Um, that's completely off道s. So if we wanted to disband those committees or if we wanted to make them lifetime appointments, um.
We could just let it.
I I think we talked about this a little bit. I think, I tend to think that as one new appointment has has some value in most cases.
I I don't have a problem with it in in principle. Um, I I'm just like, I'd like to make sure the list gets cleaned up. It's basically my goal.
Yeah.
Um, and also the ADA coordinator.
Mm-hmm.
Apparently, you know, you haven't found anyone for it, but it's not entirely clear to me exactly what that person has to do, but, um, for instance, it's it's public buildings, but does that mean only municipal buildings or any above building that could be available to the public, like would that be the job or?
But no, a store would fall under ADA. Um, in our case, it actually is mostly municipal buildings, just because there's not a lot of public buildings together.
Right, but the store is gonna eventually reopen here. The, um, roadside will probably reopen there. I don't know.
Yeah.
Church.
Burn churches, right?
Churches, most of them.
So do we need to have, like, um, does MGL require us to have one?
Mm-hmm.
It may well, but we should know. And, um, if it does, since we have had trouble finding someone willing to fulfill the role, uh, is it a conflict of interest, which I suspect it might be, to assign that duty to the building inspector or to the director of operations because both of them are town employees and we're down on town buildings? I can see that would be squishy, but.
It is a conflict with the building inspector. He's already said that.
Right.
And I, here's what I think. I, we could ask her if it's a conflict for the director of operations, but I I just don't think, you know, that's an ideal person. I know we've been having trouble finding people. I will find, I will find someone to serve as a department.
Okay. That would mean.
Um, and then we can, we don't need to.
No, then we don't need to ask those questions.
Go through.
Well, I think it would be good to know Justin for future because, I mean, in case we can't keep someone in it or they find it to be.
Own risk or whatever.
Yeah, you know, it ends up being like a field driver and fence dealer position. I think it would be good to know if the duties can fall under the director of operations.
Well.
Obviously, I don't think it's ideal because, yeah, they are responsible, but also it's like you can't have someone monitoring themselves.
So, and I, and I talked to John, Don Trico, and, you know, the ADA coordinator doesn't necessarily have a lot of authority. They essentially raise concerns.
Right, okay.
Which then he would be made aware of.
Okay.
Um, I think having the director of operations who's responsible for the maintenance of these buildings be the ADA coordinator doesn't make a lot of common sense because you wouldn't wanna raise concerns against yourself just naturally. Um, and if you did, wouldn't you just take care of them rather than raise them to go to the building inspector?
For right. But it's a check and balance kind of thing. I think it makes sense to have it out of, out of office. And if it can't be filled, then that's on us, but, um, what's, I said this, I have recently become much more aware of.
They.
The importance of the DA, um, says the woman who had to go on her butt up to a second floor. This was very amusing. So we, for my daughter's graduation, we booked, uh, a room in Cambridge and I very carefully had a discussion and told them that I was on crutches and I need to be on the first floor. And they were very thoughtful. They knew I was, um, not completely mobile and they were concerned about whether I would be able to get into the shower. So they moved me to a a stall shower on the second floor. Which of course I could not use the shower, but I also could not easily get to the second floor.
Yeah.
So, right, me, well-meaning, but disastrous.
Yeah.
So anyway, um, okay, so those are those. Plus, so then my next concern is, um, I would like to, as you know, get every employee, um, that we pay that is not, I don't think election workers, although we're paying them, we count because they're intermittent workers and, you know, they're, if they were a problem, the clerk would be like, yes, I'm not using them again. Um, but any other employee that's on here that we pay, which I think, what would that be? That would be the clerk. I had a list, which of course I would have to find again, um, and the part-time officers.
And the chief, police chief.
And the police chief.
And the fire inspector.
And the fire inspector. And what about all the the other inspectors on the two-year ones?
Oh, they work on fee basis.
Oh, they work on fee basis, okay. Um, I would like to get everybody on the annual review cycle. So I would, since I, as I understand it from previous council KP ruling about if it's an employee and you've appointed them during, apparently it kind of indefinitely appointed until such time as you ask, whether you reappoint them yearly or not. Um, I would like to postpone appointments to get them on an annual cycle so that they can be reviewed this year and put onto the budget properly so that we get everything working on a cycle. That is my proposal.
Okay.
Um, I'm, let me know what you think, but.
Yeah, I think we are, you know, the HR director is joining us on Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't, I think it's not going to be easy to review before making these appointments.
Why do we have to renew the appointments now is the question then.
So I, for the, for the positions where it does matter, I would think if we didn't renew it, I mean, that was, um, really Jeremiah Pollard, town council, had said, had talked about this state of limbo. Um, I would think, you know, if we're talking about town employees, um, i- if we wanna do evaluations, I thi- I think that's a good thing. We put it in our letter to the HR directors as as a list of priorities. But I don't think that we should postpone appointments until until we've been able to complete evaluations because that could be a long time. Um, and it's not really the employees doing that we haven't been doing evaluations, right? Um.
But they're continuing to be employed as I understand it.
Based on advice that I never, based on advice from Jeremiah Pollard.
I thought it was K P.
Jeremiah said that you are considered appointed unless told otherwise.
I'm pretty sure I have some hang on K P, so I will. I think I have it here that's from a KP, which would be more recent than that.
Yeah, and KP.
But I would think you'd wanna add those positions to your questions to council to see if they're one of the required ones that needs to be on there. Like, I know the police aren't. They have to be reappointed every year.
And so if we don't reappoint them by the end of the fiscal year.
By Thursday night?
I don't, I think it causes a problem, but.
I just, I feel like if we have, like, it's just funny, most of the employees, town employees are not on here. Right? The majority are not on here.
Um, yeah, we, I mean, we make a lot of indefinite appointments. Um, one thing, so as to employees who are on here, we are pretty sure that the police department has to be on here. So that takes care of the police department.
Right.
The fires, you know, these appointments to committees and advisory boards are are a different story.
Right.
Fire inspector, records access officer, accountant clerk and treasurer all recently became appointed positions from elected positions, officers, agents, advisory.
That's not true on the records access officer.
What's that?
That was not always a position.
No, these, I I'm sorry, I, maybe my, uh, cadence was off, but I just listed fire inspector, records access officer, but the next three all became recently appointed from elected accountant, clerk and treasurer. Um, uh, advisory, police department, election workers.
Wait, advisory, so you skipped a bunch?
Well, I mean, all of those are are like Lake Garfield Working Group.
They're all advisory, right?
Yeah, I mean, we only appoint those because we want to. I think that it's a good, I think it's good to have those, those types of duties.
I have a problem with appointing those and and I don't have any question about them. That's fine. As long as we're not appointing dead people, I'm good with it.
Yeah, um, like gas inspector, inspectors, those seem like probably positions that need to be appointed to have authority. Whether or not they continue on another authority when their appointment expires is a different question. But I just don't, I just don't feel like now is the time to figure it out or or play with that in the sense that that the HR director is just beginning their job and if the first thing we say is we need you to. Is just beginning their job, and if the first thing we say is, we need you to evaluate a dozen employees or whatever, however. Whatever number it is, before we can reappoint them, we could be talking months where they're, where they're in a state of limbo.
We're about to start loading, I, I just.
And I just, I don't think it's the right thing to do for employees, um.
Mm-hmm.
Who are. I, 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 I.
No, I totally see your point, I totally see your point, my, I like, I guess my question is whether or not, um. The question of the, the year value of a paid employee, which is different to me than, like, in this case, it's the clerk, I'm thinking of most directly, right, that's. Your point about the inspectors is well taken, and I have no, by the way, we probably should be evaluating. Their function too, though I have zero concept of how that would be done, or whether it's completely appropriate, but. Shouldn't, shouldn't there be some, like, what, if somebody has a problem with an inspector.
Mm-hmm.
What recourse do they have? They just come to us and complain?
The, Don Trico supervises them.
That's what I think. Okay, so they, they do receive supervision?
Then there's a building, board of building, there's, there's boards of all of those inspectors.
Okay, so there is recourse and there's a process in place, thank you.
And, and here's the thing, if we, we make these appointments and our, our ability to. Uh, the ability to discipline or discharge an employee doesn't depend on whether or not.
We have to do it through the same process.
They were, they were reappointed, so I, I don't see, you know, when, when, when performance evaluations are done, I just think.
You don't see them.
It's kind of a slight to people that, due to something that was nothing, not their fault.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which the fact that we haven't done performance evaluations on these employees, it has nothing to do with their performance, it just has to.
Of course.
That was not, that's not part of the program.
We didn't have a process.
Um, so to put them in a state of limbo in that way, I, I, I don't think is appropriate.
Okay, I, I see your point.
And I, and I don't, at the end of the day, it, it's the same process to discipline or discharge an employee, whether or not you made an appointment. Or six months ago, or, um.
That doesn't change.
Yeah.
So, okay, point well taken, I, and the other issues I'm still concerned about though. Account, treasurer. Because.
Yeah, accountant, treasurer, uh, contracts, we have contracts, do we need to be appointing them?
Right. Right. And if we do, should we have the firm there rather than the name?
Yeah, and that was something that even came up in the, I remember when I was doing the minutes when we appointed Donna Brewer. I tried to make clear, you know, we appointed Donna Brewer, uh, as town council of my hours inherent, right?
Right, right.
And, uh.
So, yeah, so all the things I mentioned before, field driver, fence viewer, ADA, you think you can find an ADA.
Yeah, I'm gonna find an ADA.
We can leave that one, um. Yeah, treasurer, account, field driver, fence viewer, I think were the other ones. Do, I mean, is there anything else in here that you think we might want to do, that needs removing or reassessment?
No, I mean, I think, I think you're right, it, it's good to figure out these things, it comes up too when we do town meeting warrants, there's things on town meeting warrants. Um, there's a lot of things on town meeting warrants that are just on every year, and sometimes I think. Sometimes they make common sense, and sometimes you have to think about it for a little bit, but I wouldn't. Kind of for the same reasons here, you know, take, I would, if in doubt, I would leave them on, because I don't think it could. Hurt, uh, uh, if we want to shorten, so the advantage of figuring out exactly who we need to appoint yearly and who we don't, we just shorten this list.
Oh, but in this case, I feel like the accountant, the treasurer, if you have contracts with them, I'm not sure we should even be appointing them.
Yeah.
We have de facto appointed them by having a contract, it seems strange, it, it's redundant, but also awkward.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so I, it's not like we shouldn't approve them, I just think that having them as an appointment when we've already signed a contract is.
It's different than appointing their, their contract.
Right, their contract employees, and, and we've already recognized their service and given it a term. In the contract, so if we do need to have it on here, I don't mind, but I just think we should know.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so, other than that.
That may have been on there from the back of the day.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
One question, Ellen Coburn.
Does somebody have a question?
Yes, thank you, can you hear me? Um.
We can.
What does um, reappointment mean to you if there is no effect on discipline or dismissal based on evaluation? What does it mean to the select board to be saying, we reappoint this person tonight?
So, we have the power of appointment, and we have, and as you can read in the KP law opinion, the power of appointment comes with the power of removal. Uh, just by, by its, by its nature. Um, I think it's good to know. What, who is responsible to the board and to the, to the executive ultimately, and who is working on it, whether it's department heads, whether it's advisory committees. And. We could appoint a Lake Garfield working group indefinitely, and when members resign, they could, and if we wanted to remove a member, we could go through the process. I think it's just easier in some ways to keep them on a one-year appointment basis. And know exactly what's going on, and in some cases, it's a legal requirement that they have the authority that they have.
Like, do they inspect?
I believe, I would, I would imagine, uh, it sounds like definitely with the, the, the police department, and, uh.
But essentially, whether we, um, the process one would go through to remove, what. Justin is referring to, the document, the process one would go to to remove an employee is the same, no matter what. So if you do an indefinite appointment, or if you do a timed appointment, the process to terminate employee is no different. They're still entitled to the same rights and privileges either way.
I understand, but may I just add, um, for those of us who have worked for many, many years and seen, um. Resumes and reappointments and rehiring, et cetera, very often an employee will, um, say, I was reappointed. That's a vote of confidence, that's, that's your way of saying, you're pleased with my performance in the past year, and you're reappointing me. And if you have an employee, of course, I'm talking about the clerk at this point, who has refused to mediate and refused to change hours for the public benefit and. Um, maybe bringing an action against the town, doesn't that appear to be, um, okay with you if you reappoint? Now, I'm not saying to dismiss, I totally am not saying that, because as I understand the KP letter. By not reappointing someone who never needed reappointment to begin with, you're not really, um, doing anything different. Person continues in the job, which is what I would say should happen in this case, um, but without that, um. Affirmation that the select board would be giving by saying. You, you know, we're reappointing you because we're pleased with what you've done in the past year, um, that's just my point, and, uh, that's all I need to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you, um. So, I guess the question about how to move forward, uh, I'm going to ask Donna specifically about the contracts of the town accountant and the town treasurer. And whether or not they require a formal appointment, if, if they do require a formal appointment, should it be the name of the person who's their primary contact? Or should it be the name of the firm? Um.
And field driver and fence viewer.
Field driver and fence viewer, and I realize.
The treasurer isn't on here, but I know it, it just, it appears somewhere.
I will ask generally what particular appointments are required to be annual appointments and reappointments under Mass General Law. Where is this found in Mass General Law?
Okay.
Um. And then we could go from there, I, I, I do think, I do think save the accountant and treasurer and or, you know, and.
It's, field driver, we don't have it anymore.
You know, any, anyone else that you would have questions about, I do think that we should make, uh, the appointments, uh. I do, I don't think that we should continue on it in a state of limbo that. Um, isn't even entirely clear to me, especially for things like, you know, transfer station committee wouldn't, and, and renewable energy working group. There's, there's no sense, I mean, they're only appointed yearly because we want to appoint them yearly.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that.
And I think for as to other employees not having been evaluated, um. It's just not, it's just not their fault that they haven't been evaluated, and we will do evaluations as soon as we can work with the HR director to get that done. I think with six hours a week devoted to Monterey, I don't think it will be soon, and then at that point.
It could be a while.
Discipline, dismissal, reappointment can all become, uh, topics of, of discussion, I just don't think it's fair at this point to place that burden. Or, uh, that state of limbo upon employees for something that is ultimately the board's. I mean, SLIC board over the years never instituted, and you're new to the board, and it's happening right when you're coming on, but the SLIC board.
No, I, I agree. Policies. Right. Right, no, I, the laws drop.
You know, the SLIC board. Yeah.
Um, you know, I, I understand Ellen's point that, um, renewal is a form of, um. Approval, but I also think in this case, it's a one-year appointment, and though since the process would be the same any which way. We might as well go ahead and do it, because it doesn't, I, I think functionally it doesn't make a difference, and we don't have a, a process in place, so we go forward with it.
So, and I would move that, that we make the appointments and reappointments as listed here. Save for the town accountant and town treasurer, treasurer positions. But make all of the other six months, one year, two year, and three year term appointments.
Um, I have one other question, which is commission, the historical commission, is that the same title they previously had, or are we officially changing the designation?
They were the historical district study committee, these same seven people.
Committee. Um. Okay, and does changing them to commission, which I think I'm in favor of, but I just want for the record, does changing them to commission from district committee. Change any of their responsibilities or the rules or regulations under which they operate?
Absolutely, yeah, so, the historic district study committee was very similar to the transfer station committee or the renewable energy working group.
Advisor.
Yeah, we have this one question, uh, should the center of town be a historic district, if so, which town? And I wasn't there for the appointment, but it was essentially that, whereas the historical commission is much more similar to the conservation commission, where. In some ways, it's not really similar to the conservation mission, but we have accepted, I believe it's part of Mass General Law that says. Towns can appoint a historical commission, towns can appoint a conservation commission, and we've accepted. To my understanding, that part of Master and Law that Monterey is accepting, and we were discussing this a little bit before in the bylaw review committee meeting. Um, and maybe that's something that we should look into, is what parts of Mass General Law have we accepted?
Right, but it's gone empty.
Four years.
For four years, okay.
Yeah, and that, basically, I was at a historic district study committee meeting, and it had come up historical commission, historic district study committee. And it, it can be confusing, like, you'll even notice on the town website when you click on historical commission, it brings you to historic district study committee webpage. Which is not, reminds me of another thing to do, um, but it, you know, I really, it's actually. We should have all along have had people appointed of historical commission, so I think this is really just the right thing to do, and their mission becomes obviously more broad than just studying one thing. And reporting to the SLIC board, um, they would fulfill all the duties of the historical commission.
Okay, so the bylaw only allows five members to this historical commission, you've got seven on here.
The bylaw, I'm, because I, I was of the understanding that.
The town bylaw? Since the commission shall consist of five members who shall be appointed by the select board for terms of three years each. Section twelve of our bylaws.
So. I'm of the understanding that contradicts with Mass General Law. Um.
But if that's our bylaw, that puts us in a. The town voted to set section eight D of chapter forty of the general laws, so it's to establish a historical commission for the preservation. Promotion and development of historical assets of the town of Monterey, which shall consist of five members.
So, chapter forty, what was the section?
Eight D. And dog.
Chapter forty eight.
D is a dog. Everything takes so much longer than you think it needs to.
So, chapter, that same verse.
Seven.
Seven. The commission shall not, shall consist of not less than three nor more than seven members.
If our bylaws says five, just like we have a conservation commission that could have more, but we have it, it says seven, and we have a council on aging that says, I think, up to five.
Yeah, and so, here's the question is whether or not. Whether or not, uh.
If it's up to seven, your bylaw is five, then we probably can't do more than five.
If it's up, if it's. I don't know, because our bylaws also say that special town meetings need to be posted seven days in advance, which is fourteen days. So clearly, state law runs on that, but what I could do is.
Right.
Well, I, you know what, Mickey, I don't know that our bylaw.
Allows that?
Is legal, but I don't know it, I could add that to questions for council.
Okay.
Um.
Go for it.
I could add that to questions.
Because if we can only appoint five, probably they should choose which two don't go on, and the other two could just go to the meetings, like, it's not.
What does our bylaws say that special town meetings have to be posted in seven days?
Uh, annual notices of meetings. All warrants, section two, all warrants for county meetings, whether annual or special, shall be ellipses.
Yeah.
Uh, at least seven days before the time set for holding such meeting.
Well, that's different than, um, what the law states, the law states that the, um, special town meeting and county meetings must be, what's the word? I'm worried about getting confused. His word is that, must be, uh.
You, whether the warrant is signed or whether it's posted, you're saying?
Yeah.
Or whether there's something else?
Right, yes, I would get it from him.
Well, I, I'm somewhat familiar with that section.
I mean, for example, one thing you could do is appoint, if, if, if the bylaw, our bylaw does say five members. Although we could have appointed seven, but we could.
But you know what, I don't know that it's a bylaw, because like, and I don't know if we have the power, but like Donna said. You should have your bylaws, your zoning bylaws, and then what parts of Mass General Law do you accept? And what I'm gonna ask her is, can you accept part of Mass General Law and then change part of it? It says three to seven, can the town meeting vote say, okay, we accept that part of law, but not three, seven, five?
That, but that's a good point, like, but in, that's a good question to ask, it would strike me that saying three to seven. Gives the town the right to choose to adopt it and state the number, but that's not definitely the case, just because it seems like it's rational to me, so I think it's worth asking.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to provide us with backup options. So, i- in fact, it is the case that we can only have ten members. We can do two things, one, we could ask the commission members who are on here to tell them what the problem is, ask them to choose five members and point out to them that it's perfectly fine with us if the other two go and contribute to the meetings. And two, we could say, um, if they think it's important to have seven, that we can propose to revise the bylaws at next town meeting. Should it be that we only have ten, a power of no point five?
Yeah. Yeah.
Generally, five voting members, and if you had, if two, the other two were old, and if, if two were missing, then those two could, could vote.
So, eh, did you find that thing in National?
Yeah, so the, the law, according to the, our, the selectman's handbook says that, um. Uh, the warrant must be signed and issued by the selectman at least fourteen days, our bylaw says. That.
Issue versus.
It shall be served by posting untested copies, so that's just having the constable post them.
Yeah. I think that's what issuing means, I think if we held a special town meeting, and we said we signed it fifteen days in advance, and the constable put it up. Eight days in advance, I think that's not enough, but I don't, I think it's wrong, but.
It's.
I will amend my motion to appoint, make these appointments as listed, with the exceptions of one town accountant, one treasurer and seven members of the historical commission.
Um, and I will further amend that by saying, based on our conversation earlier today, materials recycling facility advisory board representative, they're technically, is it one for Berkshire County? Is that the school? It's from the vacant position.
Okay, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not making, I'm making no motion on the vacant positions.
The reason I. No, no, I was gonna say I would fulfill that role. But it's not worth doing that if the role doesn't exist. I'm just double checking, that's why I was gonna say.
I understand, yeah.
Yeah, Melissa.
What was it, the Murph one?
Yeah.
I need to wait till Susan comes back on the fifth.
Okay, then, then we can always do it at a later time. I'm willing to serve if that position actually exists, which is unclear if it does exist in Berkshire County.
Yeah, I see.
But if it does, then I will do it, but let's go with the others.
Okay, so is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Any further discussion or public comment? There being none, we will vote on the motion to make the appointments and reappointments for fiscal year twenty-three as listed, with the exceptions of town accountant for one year, treasurer for one year and seven members of the historical commission for three years. Susan?
Second, yes.
Justin, yes, and the motion carries. And I will follow up with Donna, if that's all right with you, on the questions that we, that we discussed and hopefully have that for next week.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Discuss anti aid questions to town council. So. I, as I'm understanding, so some context was just that the accountant was hesitant to write a check to Southernburg for ambulance?
Well, we don't, they wanna know if council recommends getting an invoice from them.
Okay.
Or whether it needs to be treated as a sub grant recipient. Right now, alls we have is the letter and I had asked her if we could pay from that and she said, no, I want clarification on whether, because it's ARPA funds and it could be audited, whether they should be treated as a sub grant recipient because they are separate 501(c)(3) or whether we can just get an invoice from them.
Is it the anti aid, I mean, is, is what exactly?
You can't make donations to private.
Ah, okay, so this is the how, how.
But that's not, that's not what she is concerned about, yeah.
It's regarding the ARPA funds disbursement to the ambulance.
Okay.
That's why you confused me when you sent that email, it's like anti aid, why do we have the anti aid?
So, it's unrelated to anti aid, she just wants to make sure that the.
Assessment.
Is invoiced properly?
Whether we need to do it as a sub grant recipient and if that's the case, we need to have a sub grant recipient agreement. She said the council should have some, you know, template for that.
Because it's ARPA funds?
Because it's ARPA funds. So when you're, when you're giving your grant monies to another entity, she seems to believe that it should be a sub grant recipient.
That is the accountant that the police?
Yes, and she just wants the council to confirm. And if that's the case, then I need a template of a sub grant recipient agreement.
Okay.
Which usually says something like, you know, we are going to do X, Y and Z with this money and they may have to report to us, they may, you know.
Okay. So, if it's all right with you, Susan, I will.
Please get asked council.
If, if the ARPA funds to go to Southernburg for ambulance should, can be just written, a check written based on invoice or whether they should be, fill out a sub grant recipient form, agreement. Item, new business number two, town charter committee status. So, uh, appointments, uh, we're in the middle of making appointments.
Yep.
And.
Should we have a list of these people?
Yes, it would be Mickey Jervis.
Yep.
John Silver, Catherine Hurst and Ronald Winters, if I'm not mistaken. And those people.
Catherine Hurst and who is the third fourth one?
Uh, Ronald Winters. And I believe we appointed them for a one-year term last year. Uh, in the fall.
Have you guys met, Mickey?
No, it was put on hold when everything was being so volatile and felt that it could impact the workings of that kind of committee. While the cameras, and there were people, so much hubbub, too much, too, too, too much going on that just couldn't, it could impact your apple on things.
Indeed.
So, and, and those appointments run through November third, twenty twenty-two. And we had talked about, there was no size specified in the town meeting vote. I forget whether it was just the size from the bylaw review committee of five members or whether we edited it out on town meeting floor. A size that had been specified, but either way, it ended, there was no size specified by, by the town meeting. So we appointed four people, there is very little interest.
I was gonna say, I don't remember there being, I think I remember.
And then there was a lot of interest, we had, uh, eight or ten roughly.
And what, so.
More people were.
Four is an awkward number because you could get deadlocked, so.
Yes.
Why not five?
Well, um, Steve Weiss, who was on the board at the time, um, and I had a, a, a long discussion about how many members should be on it. And we ended up, before we finished that discussion, uh, we just postponed the whole thing. We didn't prevent them from ever meeting, but Mickey Jervis, who was one of the four members, said that she didn't want to meet in the, in the current environment. I do see, Don Coburn has his hand up, Don?
Um, I, I just wanted to mention that you want, that you might wanna give thought to the relationship between the charter committee and the bylaw committee. And provide some parameters so that those two boards don't conflict. Because the charter is, covers things that would otherwise be covered by a bylaw. And you don't want bad relations to arise between the two groups. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and, and thank you, Don. The, the scope of the committee as it was laid out in the town meeting vote was to, to investigate and advise the board of selectmen to see if a proposed town charter is appropriate for Monterey.
Not to actually write one, just to see if we should even think about writing one? With that?
Yeah, I mean, that.
Sorry, I forgot, I forgot. Forget what I said, I forgot.
Yeah, so we, so we went through, we did initially actually advertise it without sending a, a number of people and we, we only received four interested parties. Then we received a lot more interested parties and I had mistakenly thought that we had set the limit at five, uh, members. Then Steve and I set the limit at seven. I, we could do the play by play.
Right.
And then eventually we ended up not appointing anybody else. And we can't really put the whole, I mean, we could put the whole thing on hold, uh, but we didn't. We just de facto didn't make any further appointments and the group never organized itself.
Okay.
Um.
At this point, we actually did put it on hold, but then because of the state of affairs with the select board.
Oh, okay.
It said you weren't going to make any further appointments.
Yes, that, you're drawing my memory.
Right.
We said that we would put it on hold until the investigation was completed. Um, but I mean, like all of the decisions that were made in this whole thing, they were made by the select board and can be changed by the select board.
Okay, absolutely, so the question is, what do we want to do?
Yes, that's exactly the question.
Do you have an opinion as a ma- appointed member of this group?
I really haven't investigated town charter business, you know, I have some concerns about some of the things I hear that happen in towns and I just, I would wanna investigate the whole thing before I made an opinion on it.
I, 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 so it would be a question of whether that, that would be up to the.
Or, or just.
Okay.
But the thing is, do we want to reinvent our wheel? Or is our wheel turning around fine as it is?
And, and I will put on board that my, this was some months ago when this came up, so I don't one hundred percent trust my precise memory. But my biggest concern with the issue of charter is that I feel like it's a way to get around the majority required at town meeting. Because, not for you guys, because you're like, should we even think about having a town charter? But if you do choose to go forward with the town charter and you appoint a town charter committee to write the town charter, you need, your votes at town meeting to go from bylaws to charter, then you would need to change a bylaw. And that's not okay with me. I feel like charter is a way to get around the majority or super majority you need for bylaws.
The, the direct, the direct grant that we have, correct, yeah.
But you do, you do, of course, need a majority vote to adopt the town charter.
But I, but we usually need super majority vote to change our bylaws.
Okay.
We need two thirds. And I think you do not need the two thirds vote to approve the charter that would replace the bylaws.
Yeah, I'm not.
And that to me, that is probably.
And I also, I also, I could be mistaken, but from a, a big learning curve last year, I think it might even just be a petition to ask to establish a charter to the state legislature.
But you still want to get that committee, my recollection from rereading this, and again, it's been some months because I did this when it was first brought up at the town meeting and I think that was two, twenty twenty?
That wasn't once, that was like a year, two years.
Yeah, okay, and that, so it's a little old, so I don't one hundred percent guarantee that. But at the time when I looked it up, my main concern was that the process was, once the town voted to go forward to appoint a charter committee, to make a charter, that committee, which only has a few members, as I recall it, I think it's three, which isn't very many, um, gets to write the charter and that charter requires fewer votes to go from the bylaw situation to the, to the charter situation than a bylaw change would require. And once I read that, I was like, this process bothers me. It is very anti-democratic. It, it's severely less democratic than our current process. And I had grave reservations about that. I may have gotten it wrong and I fully, fully admit that. But at the time, that is my recollection of my concerns about even the concept of charter.
You know, by, by law, other than a few years when we are a little bit something's wrong in the air, I think maybe the COVID was disturbing, so I better know it was, I have to know.
I'm definitely something wrong.
By law, I think this town has operated relatively well over the past thirty-five years, except for the last two. So, you know, I, I don't know if you wanna reinvent it, you know, but as I said, I have not investigated it at any point to.
But that, I mean, and it would be perfectly reasonable for the bylaw, for the charter committee to look into it and say, no, here, we don't think this is something we should do and here's why, right? Your, your, your purview wouldn't be to say, yes, do this.
Yes, yeah.
It would be to say, here's what we found, here are the pros, here are the cons, here's what we recommend, and then.
And then only recommend it, that's, that goes just as far as your best.
Right. Right, exactly.
And by that time, you should have somebody in front of the seat.
Yes, I would imagine. August, it's coming.
I saw, Don, you, did you have your hand up still, or was that from last time? Hi, Don.
Let me just say, and now my mind is refreshed. There are two questions for the charter committee. One, should we have a charter? And two, which is also very important, is which of the two methods, they're very different, should we use for that process? Um, and, uh, and the process, by the way, is, is fully democratic whichever way you go. Thank you.
It's whole rule or something else? Okay, so what, 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 what do, what do we wanna do?
If you, if they wanna meet, I think that should meet. But if they don't wanna meet, then I don't know what we do.
Well, yeah, I mean. Yeah.
Do you wanna meet and decide if you, as a group?
We have three vacant seats.
We have three vacant seats. Um, they can meet as a group and say, if they want more members, we could decide to, we, we have a list of these other people that put themselves forward. And I, as I recall, one of the issues that Steve had was that he wanted to either appoint everyone or no one.
Yes.
Because he felt it was unreasonable to appoint someone, to choose one person over another. I, I don't share that. I, I would say that if people had different skills and had reasons why they thought they would be good, I would be happy to choose among them.
Yeah.
But, um, and, and you know, of course, can't, of course, we could throw drugs at them, but.
Yeah.
Um. I'm okay with recontacting them and seeing if they'd still be willing to serve.
Yeah.
Thoughts?
Yeah, and we could, we, we can also discuss further appointments. The select board had agreed on a seven-member uh, town charter committee and, but we could also change that if we want to, more or less people, um.
I think seven is good.
I don't think it's good, I don't think it's good.
Yeah, people in seven kids on wheelie. Five, five or, or five or seven would be down.
Um, if we were gonna make further appointments, we would likely wanna re-advertise that for, for a certain amount of time.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. Um.
Yeah, but I still think it's worth re-contacting the people that are already in the queue.
Yes, and who, who are already appointed.
Yeah.
Don, do you have your hand up again? Okay.
I apologize to you, I'm sorry.
No worries.
No problem.
Okay, so, uh, can we please post Melissa to the website that we're interested in town charter committee applicants? And I will reach out to all of the people who showed interest, who submitted applications last time we did that, or we could just dig up all of applications, what do you wanna do?
What, I can do that, sorry, I was just still laughing. Okay, I can dig them up.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it was Don Coburn, Hello and Janet Max and I'm forgetting.
Debbie Slater.
Debbie Slater.
Sean Trana. Rebecca Rollin, but Rebecca Rollin and Don Coburn both withdrew their interest, if I recall correctly.
Which is fine. Um, okay, so that takes the pool down, which is maybe not a bad thing.
But I, I do think we should ask the people who, who are currently appointed, ask the people who expressed interest last time if they, if their application is still, uh, if they're still willing to serve.
They still want to serve.
And we should also post it, I think, on the town website, uh, just because we're in a different state of.
Yeah, that totally is, that's totally fine.
Um, and then see where you go from there. Maybe people who are on it wanna stay on it, maybe they don't. Maybe the people who applied before wanna stay on it, maybe they don't, maybe we find new people.
So, right, so we need to contact the people who were appointed to see if they're willing to continue to serve and actually meet, the people who put in previous applications and see if they are still willing to serve if appointed and to put out a notice that we are looking for applicants. Um, do we want a deadline on that?
Yes, and that would be July. July, uh, twenty-first? We need it interest by?
Works for me.
Okay, we need it interest by July twenty-first and answers back. I think if someone's appointed.
Wait, why July twenty-first is a Thursday?
Um, because that gives us time to post it for the following, agenda the following Wednesday.
Ah, gotcha, okay, that works.
If, what we had done sometimes, we set it for like Tuesday or Monday.
No, no, that's fine, that works.
I guess a little higher. Yeah.
That worked, by the twenty-first and then we'll talk about it on the twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, and town charter committee. Okay, so. And are we sticking with seven men, we'll go stick with seven members?
I, I'm okay with that, I think, what, past seventy kids I'm building.
Yeah, okay. Uh, next item of business is the Johnson case settlement. And we had a, just a letter saying that the.
I didn't include that in there, because some of it might not be public.
Yeah. Yeah, that the, that the, uh, Johnson case was settled, we, I think we wanna make that announcement so that people are aware, because people may have been wondering, I don't have.
It was settled, I believe, party was with prejudice, though I'm not clear on exactly what that legal meaning is.
I don't.
Um, also is, there was no amount stated.
I don't believe that that amount is public knowledge.
Okay.
Um, it's my understanding that we are not obligated to reveal an amount. Don, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, I, what would be the reason for not revealing it?
We don't need to disclose the amount? We don't need to disclose the amount?
Yeah, what's the reason that, the, the, who said you don't have to, and what's the reason for that?
Um, the town council said that, uh, we don't have to disclose what we know to be the settlement amount.
It might be good to, because remember somebody asked a town meeting and I gave a range, because I couldn't remember the exact amount, it may be good to, to state the amount so that it is out there what the official amount was.
Yeah, frankly, I've never even, uh, seen.
I haven't seen it now.
Seen it with certainty, uh, um, and, uh.
I don't understand if you believe in transparency, why the town is not entitled to know this.
Well, I, I don't know. We can produce documents that are public records to you if you, if you, uh, desire, but.
No, I want to know what the settlement was, and I think the town should know what the settlement was.
Well, I can't say it with enough.
Unless there's a legal reason not to do it.
I can't, frankly, Dawn, I can't even say it with certainty that I know.
I can say with certainty, I don't know, except.
Well, you could find out.
The letter from the lawyer, the letter from the lawyer.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't know that.
They didn't say that in the letter though. No, it's in his email.
So what we will do for transparency is we will post the letter that the select board received uh, last fall saying that the case was settled, uh, uh, at these minutes.
That's not trans, that's not transparency. That's not transparency at all. That thing doesn't show anything. There is, you haven't given, if there is a legal reason, let the lawyer state what the legal reason is for not telling us what settlement is, because um, otherwise, I can't imagine the public not knowing, I really can't.
Well, Dawn, you say the public not knowing the select board doesn't even really know, uh.
Oh.
Well, you should find out.
The, the, this is.
I barely even knew that this happened.
This isn't.
Last fall, when I got, it was like, I got, I think I got one email that said this case was settled.
And this isn't town council, that's council here, it's the
Insurance.
Insurance company, right?
Yeah.
So we would have to inquire of the insurance company what the amount was, although I guess we do know the amount. But we'd have to inquire with our town council whether we need, whether we should or must.
Or can.
Or, yeah, should, must, or even are allowed to reveal that amount. You want to put that on the list?
I, I don't, I don't feel, I mean, if.
You don't feel like you would like to tell the public?
Well, I, 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 I don't know what's the, what's the benefit, uh, uh, I feel. If we were required to, you know, produce a, a document that says the amount, then we are, but what, I don't.
Why would we not do so?
What, reveal the settlement amount? I, I don't know how these law, lawsuits and settlements work. I'm not.
That's why I, I like, I would like an opinion from, because I, I, you know, I think it's pretty clear, at least one person is going to ask for that information.
Yeah.
And given that that's true, I would like to know whether this is an amount we can reveal or cannot reveal.
Yeah.
If we can reveal it to anyone who asks, then we can reveal it to the public at law.
Yeah, I will ask Donna that. And get some legal advice on that.
You're welcome.
And Ellen has her hand up?
Yeah, I, I'm just gonna say that, um, you know, I think any taxpayer who, um, pays taxes in town um, would want to know because it's possible that our insurance, um, would, would go up because of the settlement. Um, we, we all heard a great deal about what caused the lawsuit as it was going along. Um, and, you know, for the public to think about what shouldn't happen in the future, what might happen again and then cause us to have to pay more money as taxpayers, I just think that that's a natural, um, uh, curiosity isn't even the right word, inclination for a taxpayer to want to know what happened.
Melissa, are, are, is the deposition, uh, public document?
Deposition?
Or there were documents that you, you had a file of, is, are those public documents related to the case?
I don't know, maybe. I wouldn't want to empty it, that's a thick, that's a thick file.
Right, it's.
I mean, at, so at the, at the end of the day, some of the documents related to the case are public. It's possible that some of the documents related to the case are not public, um.
It might be good to have clarification on, like, oh, well, that's true, if someone requests them.
If someone requests them.
I was gonna say, I wouldn't waste your time on someone requesting.
Then we have to, right, okay, that's fine.
So, but.
But the amount, I think, is a reasonable thing to find out about.
Yeah.
Because it, it could in fact, Ellen's not wrong, it could affect our.
Well, it already affected our insurance.
Right, but I, it, right.
And we filed the suit, we got a 10% increase, which I think goes away this year.
Right, okay.
Okay. So, town administrator items, Title V results.
Yeah, I know we talked about it a little bit last thing, I just wanted to make sure that you got the email that said that the Title V was done, there were repairs that, smaller repairs that needed to be done.
Oh, yeah.
Facing 20 feet of, um, settled belated sewer line, replacing the SAS Fenn pipe. And then they also recommended, um, pumping the subject tank, which we did, adding six inches more risers to the tank inlet and outlet and adding a filter to the effluent T. Um, they, he doesn't seem to feel that putting a playground on there would be a problem.
Yeah.
Okay. As long as it didn't go down four to two.
Right, so then he played out a work ran deeper than two.
Right.
Right. Okay, so I just wanted you to be aware and I, I think I passed this along to the parks commission as well, but I will.
Yeah.
That would be great.
I did forward it to town.
You did, okay, I, I, I think I did, but I commented, okay, if you did, that's good.
Um, the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination Sexual Harassment Policy Recommendation from Town Council.
Right, so I did raise through this, um, and um, so as I understand it, Donna Bruler, Town Council, did look at the sexual harassment policy currently in our employee manual and felt that it wasn't, um, quite where it should be and put this forward as a model of what it should be. Um, I would be in favor of, go, I mean, especially given that it's from the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination and supported by our town council, I would say that we should go ahead and, um, adopt this to, um, as a change to our employee manual.
Yeah, so the sexual harassment policy is, is within, it's not a separate standalone policy in the employee manual?
I think it's an addendum. Ooh, what happened there? It's just, it was at like an end of it when I was reading through it, but I don't know whether it's called, it's not an addendum or something.
Yeah, that's, I, it is a little.
I'd, I'd have to put our information in this one before you accept.
Right, yes, exactly.
Yeah, where it says like.
Yeah, town name here.
Yeah, town of Monterey.
Right, yeah.
I mean, I think, so it's a recommendation from council, it's the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination Model Policy. Um, I don't know, it, it would be good to have this sooner than later. It would also be good to work on the HR director with it. Um, so those are two very conflicting, those are two very conflicting goals.
That, and that's fine. Right.
Um, because we have a lot for the HR director to work on.
Although, yeah.
So, yeah, the sexual harassment is appendix B. I mean, I can certainly make this fit to Monterey, like put all the Monterey stuff and then go over it with her when she starts next week and she can review it with her.
Can we do that and then just replace it? And when, because when we replace, when we redo the employee handbook as a whole, are all the towns, she's gonna work with all the towns individually on their own employee handbooks?
Right.
But this seems like it might be something we can just knock out right away and would probably be good, so why don't, if that could be a first thing that we work on with the HR director, I think that'd be great.
Yep. And, um, as I understood Donna's letter also, you can basically use the same format for, right, or harassment policy, but the only change is that you can, you need to um, make clear what qualifies as harassment. Um, one thing that, like, I, I noted that in that section, um, the discussion was largely focused on um, harassment on the basis of particular qualities of the person being harassed. But it strikes me that you can just plain harass someone. You can harass someone without it being on the basis of their race, color, religion, origin, ancestry, sex, gender identity, age, or handicap.
It's just not illegal if you, if you harass someone.
Actually, I, I don't think that's true.
Or maybe that's the old, I don't know, it's.
I, I think harassing someone is wrong no matter what.
Yeah.
Right, and I, I'm perfectly happy to have those other things in there, but I, I think you can harass someone on the basis of none of the above and just be harassing them, just like you could stalk somebody. You don't have to stalk them because they're a particular gender, you could just stalk them because they're them and maybe feel like it, right? So, I, I just would like that
That's a good question.
particular thing to actually be included, that just plain harass it without that focus.
That's kind of all standard, not, not based on any
class.
Class, that's a good word, class. Identification, right.
Right, yeah. Okay, so we'll work on that with the HR director.
Okay.
So town council contact form, thank you for finding these, Melissa. Um, if it's all right with everybody, while I'm, I already agreed to review the town council contact policy and I think that we should implement a new, uh, contact form for town council and town council contact policy at the same time, since the town council contact policy will say, please use the form, uh, please use the, whatever we end up calling the form, use of legal council policy or, uh, form. And, uh, what we have is.
I kind of like the way it has the policy on one side
Yeah.
and the form on the other, so you don't have to be in doubt about what the policy is.
Yeah. And hopefully we can shorten our policy to one page.
That was what I was about to say, thank you. I, I like this idea.
Um, so I will work on that
Okay.
for, for our next meeting, I will. Uh, and I will include, I, I didn't even notice that, that we put it in, put it right on one page, but that's good.
Okay.
Payroll time card module is our next item.
Yeah, so the treasurer and I are recommending that we accept, um, go forward with the payroll web time and attendance feature that they have at Harper's. Um, we would like to start off slowly because we want to make sure we work out any kinks and get everybody on board with it. Um, so I think it takes about three weeks to a month for them to implement it and, and get the time cards the way we want them set up. We're suggesting starting with me and the highway department, since the highway department is used to using a, a logging in clock there. Uh, and once we get the hang of it, then we will add, we'd like to do the tax collector, the clerk and library second. And then we can go from there, because I think like the fire department and the police department are going to be a little more tricky, so we want to try to get the easier departments done.
Because they have to convert from one system to another system?
Well, they're going to be converting from doing it by hand to actually logging in and using a time clock feature.
Right. Okay.
And this will end up saving money in the end, because there won't be so much time, um, entering the payroll into Vadar because this integrates with our system and it will upload right into, uh, Vadar.
And who does that now, is it Lisa Door?
Uh, no, the treasurer does that.
Um, what's it cost to?
Well, are we, our contract, will we get a break in the contract from the treasurer or not?
Probably, probably not this year, no, but, um, because there's going to be a lot of implementation, um, time.
Is there a cost to the actual module?
There is, so it's, um, $650 to implement, to, to create all the setup and everything. And then, um, there is a weekly fee. Uh, I'm sorry, not a weekly, uh, $133 a month. Um, based on the number of employees we have, so that's actually going to start off smaller since we wouldn't be implementing everybody. Um, there are costs that are going to go away because of this, I don't have that on me right at the moment, um. But Sarah said that it will be a, it will be a money saver in the end. So, it's our treasure.
And will, and this is also something we can work with the HR director on implementing to some degree? I mean, like, if she has advice, is, this is all human resources stuff, right?
Not really.
No.
It's payroll, treasurer, me.
And I, I don't like, yeah, it would seem to me it's just payroll.
No.
This is just a time card, this is clocking in and clocking out.
Okay. Gotcha. I just remember going, if I had questions about payroll, I guess there's you, uh, and I was at an organization about a human resources department, but maybe because they were just, maybe because it was.
In the private sector, it's a little different.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so it's just, right now, we're talking about a $650 fee.
Fee, yeah.
Uh, to set it up, and then is there a monthly or a yearly cost that comes along with it?
It's a monthly fee of $133.25, once we have all employees, all 41 employees on it. But like we said, we won't be starting off with like $600 now.
So would, but I mean, for some of the employees, like if a firefighter's, well, first of all, they don't have time to press a button, we, when, while they respond to a call. But if, if it's a stipend, like select board, we, we would fill out this, right?
You will, actually, so there are, that's why we're going to set it up slowly, because everybody's had a different situation with the stipends. We'll have just a simple time card, right now I fill it out for you guys, but you, I could still do that, but you could also go in and, um, mark.
One.
But you would just, right, it would be a monthly stipend, yes.
For a monthly stipend. Okay.
I know, I was like, do I get, do I get like to log all the hours I'm spending on a phone and a computer?
You absolutely could, so that if we could see, I mean, it is set up that way, so that if you have a salary person, you clock in and clock out, so you do see how much time is.
But it's not a salary, it's stipend.
I have a stipend, but, you know.
Yeah.
Well, that's right. No, I was really just joking. I, I kind of feel like five grand for this amount of work is sort of funny anyway, but, um, all right.
Okay, yeah, uh, so I would motion to approve the, uh, payroll module with the initial upfront cost of implementing it and we will begin, we won't begin a monthly cost because we don't have everybody on it?
Right.
Okay.
Well, we will, but it'll, it'll be much smaller.
We won't have a lot of, we won't be wondering.
Okay.
Because it's based on how many employees.
Okay, and the, and the, uh, the, our portion of the monthly cost, whatever the monthly cost is with the town administrator and highway department.
Yeah. Uh, I second.
Any further comments, discussion? There will be none, so vote Susan.
Yes.
Justin, yes, motion carries? And I move my agenda. Correspondents' minutes and public comments. So, a couple of things just to, to get out of the way. The open meet, we received a letter from the Attorney General's Office, Assistant Attorney General, which is what happens every time there's an open meeting law complaint and it's resolved. This particular complaint was about Don Coburn filed a complaint alleging that Mr. Weingold improperly discussed certain executive session matters prior to release of the executive session minutes of a meeting held on February 2nd. They declined to review the complaint on the basis that, um, it is not against the open meeting law in particular to discuss executive session matters prior to the release minutes. And we'll just attach that to the minutes unless anyone else has any questions. Okay, so, and I see Martin is on the call, because our next letter is from Martin and Jenna on Sanusfield Road about getting electricity um, from National Grid. And actually, at the time, things have changed since this was put on the agenda and it sounds like, um, sounds like we might be expecting soon
A poll hearing.
A poll hearing from National Grid. Martin, is there anything you have to add, are you there?
Uh, yeah, we're here, uh, this is Jenna, and we don't have anything more to add. Um, they said they were designing the, um, the poll plan and they would put a petition for a hearing to you.
Okay, so we'll be expecting that.
We'll expect.
We haven't had any poll hearings yet.
Ta-da.
Um, so, that's that. The next item is the letter from Ellen Coburn regarding the State 911 Department dated June 27th. And there, it looks like the State 911 Department or service provider dispatched a technician to the end of Bear Time Mountain Road who found that there's no ATT Verizon or T-Mobile strength to text to 911, uh, which is not good at all, so I guess we are, we are still working with Verizon. Susan, you're working with, or speaking in talks with Verizon?
So, the, the last, my last contact with the government poll, I guess she's, I, I don't remember her precise title, I don't wanna say it wrong. Basically, what she said was that, um, they had previously got a, a line check from Great Barrington to the slick that's at the corner of Fairview, it's the big box that's on the corner of Fairview and Bear Town. She now has ordered a line check from the slick to the end of Bear Town. It's a process that's apparently quite lengthy, because they, they check the lines, the copper line, all the way down in sections. Um, and so she didn't expect that that would be completed before sometime in July, which I took to the end of July. Um, but, uh, hopefully, at that point, you will, you know, you'll communicate to us the results of that. If I don't hear from her by August 1st, I will re-contact her and ask what the outcome of that was. Um, and, you know, maybe told they hadn't yet completed it, but whatever. Um, and, you know, I understood from her that once they identify where the problems are, they will make a plan to fix them, but, um, that's more than we've had so far, and this has been going on for years. So, I, you know, I still, um, I haven't heard that further from the fire chief as to, um, whether he has been able to contact the other fire departments from the towns that share the, that Bear Town, that State Forest.
Yeah.
That's in a lot of the, like, blackout zone. Um, because I feel like if it was all four towns trying to approach either 911 or one of the cell servers to improve our coverage in there for 911 purposes, we might have a stronger case than just one town. Um, but I imagine that that process will take a little while. Um, meanwhile, I'm getting responses back from having sent the letter out, they're coming in one at a time. Um, hopefully, there will be enough there to give me a tool to go forward for the 911 issue, because it, it's pretty clear we have a gap in service. Um, I, there is one thing that isn't on here, that's an email that we received from the.
I see, just while we're on that, I see that Ellen is on the, is on the call, Ellen? Coburn?
Yes, hi, um, there's a two, there, thank you, there's a two-pronged, um, issue here. Of course, it's the landline going out, but, um, the other thing is the 911 texting, being able, if the landline goes out, to text 911. Verizon, um, some higher up Verizon department left me four, four different voicemails asking me to return a call to someone named Eric about that. When I tried to call back, the message said, you have to put the first and last name of the employee, and he didn't leave his last name, so I could never return the call until finally, one day, he texted me, just three or four days ago. So I did talk to him, and, and the latest now is that he's supposedly sending somebody to see whether there's some kind of a device, and I don't know what he's talking about, to enhance the internet to allow texting somehow through that. I have no idea whether this is going anywhere, but I just wanted to report that. And if he comes to my house about it, I would appreciate knowing from Susan, um, any other people that I should direct him to, because I know it's not just me, I'm sure that Tim Stanton next door can't text 911 either. Anyway, I don't know who else, but that is something you should just know about, and I'll keep you posted, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for work.
Thanks for working on this, Ellen.
Good night, and thank you.
You too. Good night.
Everybody.
Hi. Um, all right, um, I, I know you received it as well, I had an email from the clerk um, asking if we had contacted her lawyer for burning mediation.
Yeah.
As I understand it, we asked her, and this is my view, we asked her at a meeting whether she would participate in mediation, and she declined and decided to contact her lawyer. From my perspective, we do not have the responsibility to contact the lawyer. It was a yes or no question, her answer was no. If she wishes to provide us with further information from her lawyer, I believe that she should ask her lawyer to send us that notice. I don't think we have the responsibility to contact the lawyer. It was a yes or no question, and it was asked and answered.
Yeah, I don't think we need to take any action relative to that, I'd agree with you.
Um, I would agree with you, but I do think we need to respond to her email, otherwise we look like we're ignoring her. Um, I need to take responsibility for, for responding to her email, basically stating that, that we don't see that we have any responsibility to take it further, we asked her to participate, and she declined. Should she wish to have her lawyer issue us her, you know, send us a letter regarding this matter, she should, she is welcome to. But I, we don't have the responsibility to contact her lawyer, and I think we have to respond to her email, where it looks like we're derelict.
Yeah, um.
Because it's a specific question with a question mark at the end of it. Have.
What's the, what's the, um, uh?
I don't, it's a name.
Okay, I just got, I found it.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I would just say, no, we haven't, uh, contacted, we felt that your answer was clear. Right? Um, any other?
Um.
Or can we move into minutes?
Uh, so the minutes, I didn't give you any yet, because nobody sent me any changes.
I had previously sent you changes for the other two way back whenever.
And I was very late.
For six, eight, and six fifteen?
I definitely did.
They're not showing.
Not six twenty-two.
Right, six twenty-two, I just sent you today.
Yeah, so I sent them at four forty-six and then at four fifty-seven.
You want, you want to resumme?
Oh, today?
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, I know, I know, well, I, I.
I was gonna be with the financing.
I know, I always run that, yes.
Okay, so can you push those off to next week then, and I'll.
Can you push those off to next week?
Push it off next week.
Okay.
Uh, I follow that. We will not do minutes, six eight, six fifteen, six twenty-two. Um, I would move, next again, item, release of May 4, 2022 executive session minutes. I think that the legal reason that we held that meeting in executive session, um.
I do have that one here.
Was, was legal, I think we went into executive session to discuss legal strategy, and since then, um, we agreed to, we agreed to file an appeal, and the appeal has been filed, and that's now public knowledge. So I don't believe that, um, releasing these minutes would have any damage in effect on our litigation strategy. I think we could, we could probably just vote to release the minutes, you weren't even on board.
Right, so I, I think that, for one thing, I have to save the minutes for one.
Yeah, so, so if there's no objection, I would just say that we'll release the May 4, 2022 minutes. I'm just trying to make sure we do the executive session minutes properly, and in one of the guidances we had said, you should mention in an open meeting that you're releasing the minutes, even though the minutes eventually go up on the website, but, uh, if there's no objection, we'll release those to the public.
I don't see how that could be.
Okay, so we'll, we will release the executive session minutes of 5/4/2022, which were previously approved, now they'll be released to the public.
I had, since you have a list of things that you are asking Donna.
Yeah.
Can I add one more thing to your list?
Yeah.
It's totally in a different box.
Yeah.
I, I know that in the past, there have been some issues regarding liability concerning volunteer labor. I know, for example, that Steve Moore wanted to put a bench up at the community center, and he put it as a, these liability concerns. I think that, that, um, this is a national problem and a mass problem, not just an house problem, but I think that, um, volunteer labor is a huge valuable community resource, particularly because it builds more than just objects, it builds goodwill, it builds community spirit, and I, I think it's a really important thing to have for a lot of reasons. And I would like to know from council what we could do to make it possible for us to, without making it a risk for people volunteering their effort or time to participate in hands-on volunteer-built projects for the town. Um, and, you know.
On town properties.
On town properties, right. And, and maybe it's not possible, but I would like a process which would make it more accessible for people to do, I, without them having to prove liability coverage and go through a lot of hoops, right? Like, if we wanted to have a barn raising, could we do it? If we wanted to have a, let's get a bunch of people to rebuild the playground. Maybe that's not a good idea, because kids will be playing on it, and it's better to have a company do it, but I, I'm just, I think there are other things that could be built, whether it's a bench at the beach, or for people watching sports or whatever. It builds a lot of community spirit to get people involved in doing that and being there, and I would love to see us able to do that.
Yeah, I will add that.
Okay, that's all I got.
She's, she's not gonna have, she's gonna have a busy week.
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying not to be any of those, but.
Yeah, no, we're supposed to know.
I, I think it would be awesome.
Are there any comments or questions from public?
By the way, I will shoot you.
Motion to adjourn.
Now, I'm, I'm gonna stay up, I have too many people here.
Motion to adjourn.
A second, sorry.
Uh, Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, motion adjourned.